Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to Council Committee of the Whole for Monday, April the 28th at 6:30. We'll start off, Happy Election Day, everyone. I'm just going to start off with land acknowledgement. The City of Medicine Hat acknowledges that we live and work on treaty territory. The city pays respect to all Indigenous peoples and honors their past, present, and future. We recognize and respect their cultural heritage and relationships to the land. So, just to, we only have the three items. They're hefty items, but three items on the agenda. I'm just wondering, City Manager, did you want to just do any intro before we get going here on the first, the first one, which is Community Well-Being Plan?
Good evening. I gotta, oops. Hi, everybody. I just really wanted to say thank you from staff, and we appreciate that we're here trying to implement your mandate, and this necessitated a few extra council meetings, so we're grateful that council approved that and that you've made yourself available. Because these items that are on tonight are big initiatives that we're dealing with, and I would ask you, I don't want us to interrupt the presenters, and I don't mean that in a way that stifles anything, but sometimes if we can listen to the whole presentation, our questions get answered before the end, so. And it's up to the presenters whether they want to stop and keep going, but sometimes I am somebody who always speaks out loud while I'm thinking, and if I get off track, so I'll leave it up to the presenters to see if they want to. This one on top, the Community Well-Being Plan, has been put off a few times because of full agendas. The community service level is part of our overall review of services, and we're really excited about that because the next phase is costing, and then we'll have a more robust way to see how we're delivering service. And the final one is the Transportation Master Plan. And all of these have been, sorry, all, the staff has been working on these for quite some time, so without further ado, I will turn it over to Managing Director Hutter to introduce Director Prestaco.
Thank you, City Manager. The other thing this might do by leaving questions to the end is just speed things up a little bit. It's Election Day, and everybody's probably riveted on that as well and wants to get back to that, so, thank you. So, the first presenter, I'll turn it over to Manager Director Hutter.
Thank you, and through the chair, I know that Director Prestaco has a very thorough introduction, so in an effort to avoid duplication, I'll pass it over to Director Prestaco and Manager Dickey. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time that you've all made to come out and hear some of these presentations tonight. I do want to introduce Shawna Dickey, who will make the majority of the presentation tonight. She is our Manager of Community Supports with the Community Development Department. I will also, I believe on the line, we have Jake Papino, who is the lead consultant that we've had on this work from Urban Matters. So, if you have a question, you may see us redirect to him as well tonight. So, why a Community Well-Being Plan? Medicine Hat, like many other cities across the country, has experienced significant change over the last five or so years. We are still feeling the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, and we are seeing an increase in multiple social challenges across the community. The benefits of creating a Community Well-Being Plan are wide-ranging and impact individuals, agencies, organizations, and the broader community. The intent of the Momentum Plan, which we'll present to you tonight, is to lay the framework for priorities and actions that will support well-being in our community, and to define community well-being and the community's vision for well-being, to describe the current state of community well-being, recognizing that it is ever-evolving, to articulate factors and conditions that impact well-being in Medicine Hat, to identify specific actions required to achieve well-being in Medicine Hat, and to define the roles and responsibilities of individuals, levels of government, and organizations related to the priorities and actions that we'll introduce to you tonight. There we go. Some of the results of this work have been shared with Public Services Committee over the last 18 months, and subsequently with council via various minutes packages. So, we have shared an environmental scan and the related research report, as well as the What We Learned From Engagement Report, which follows significant engagement within our community. Today's presentation is to share the final plan with strategies and actions intended to cover a 10-year lifespan, giving direction to our teams and leadership to our community. Pending council's approval of the plan at a regular council meeting, our final stage of work will be to establish indicators, measures, and targets to evaluate the success of the strategy. We have identified through the plan that the city can play multiple roles in this work moving forward, including the roles of convener, educator, coordinator, advocate, capacity builder, funder, planner, regulator, and direct service provider. As you see the strategies and actions presented to you tonight, know that our role may change with each and/or that we may not have a role at all. Finally, I want to acknowledge that this plan builds on the good work of previously work, of work previously done in community, including the Thrive Plan, which was released in 2017, which was a plan focused on poverty reduction and well-being. The plan also leads, this plan, Momentum, also leans on and launches from all of the great work being done in community today by agencies, organizations, businesses, and volunteers. Internal to the city, we have intentionally connected Momentum to other city plans, such as the Municipal Development Plan, the Environmental Framework, and Parks and Rec Master Plan, so that purposeful linkages might advance our collective efforts. I'd like to thank everyone involved in developing Momentum, specifically our Community Advisory Committee. Their participation and contributions have been highly valued in shaping this plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Shawna.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here today, especially on this Tigers game day. Hopefully, we can get out of here in time to watch that. So, I'm very excited to be here to present the plan. I'm very pleased to share with you some of the results of this intensive work that's happened between our consultant, Urban Matters, as well as our Advisory Committee, which is also made up of agency reps and city staff. So, what influences our well-being? While we are very complex human beings, and we have many different identities and factors that affect how our well-being as individuals, as well as on a community level, these factors are often referred to as the social determinants of health. I'm sure some of you have heard of those. And so, those are things like the physical environment, access to healthcare, income, and social status, education and literacy, employment, and so on. And we can see those, oh, you can't see them very well in the Word Cloud, but they are identified further in the plan. This report views well-being as defined through these social determinants of health. Urban Matters did a review of other municipalities that have done some of this work, and there are many across Canada, but certainly in Alberta as well, in the past few years, to see that what they have found were themes that emerged around what contributes the most to well-being. And you can see on here that these themes correspond well to the social determinants of health, and they also are themes that we identified from our own community and some of the engagement we had completed. The words are very small on this one as well, but I'll go through that. So, one of the most rewarding parts for me personally of this process was the opportunity for engagement with our community, and our goal was to ensure that engagement was consistent throughout the process, so, and also that we prioritize meeting people where they were at. So, while we presented at the mix and mingle a number of times, and we had a survey on Shape Your City, the majority of our focus was on identifying those that were not traditionally had those opportunities to engage, and to go to places where they lived or where they received supports. So, some of those places we went to were the schools, Senior Center, Measen Friendship Center, where we hosted a sharing circle, the food bank. We talked to some of the volunteers and some of the people receiving supports there. And one of the most rewarding experiences for me personally was this time we spent at the permanent supportive housing unit. So, these are people that have had a number of challenges through their life and can live in an apartment building with some supports right on-site. And so, we set up in the staff area to go and talk to people one-on-one about their experiences with well-being. We brought pizza, we had a little gathering there, and people come in and chat with us, and one gentleman left the area. He talked to us for a bit, he left, and he came back, I don't know, 15, 20 minutes later, and he had made some dessert for us all to share. And so, it just, I think, really highlights how comfortable he felt, that sense of community in those buildings for him. People there were really open and honest, and we, I personally was really surprised. I expected, you know, having so many life challenges, you might have a lot of issues with your well-being, you might have a lot of negative things to say, and we really got the most positive responses, and people focusing on all the great things they had in their life and that they were thankful for. And it was just really eye-opening and just a good example of why it's important, I think, to really meet people where they're at and have those conversations with everyone in the community, and especially those that are least likely to come forward and give their input. And I'd like to acknowledge as well, the Advisory Committee in this work. A lot of the members of the Advisory Committee helped set up some of these sessions, like the, the Sharing Circle at Measen, and, oh, sorry, there was one I was thinking of. Oh, and then newcomers service organizations, and then some of our school youth and children was done through some of our community vibrancy members. So, I just wanted to acknowledge them here. Through the engagement, we learned several things, and one of those was some of the barriers to well-being. So, I don't think that these are any surprise to anyone, but I just did want to highlight and see that it's important to note what are some of the barriers for people are. We also learnt about some of the hopes for the future and some community-specific needs, so accessibility and inclusion, transportation, collaborative efforts, youth engagement, Indigenous representation, just some of the specific things that we found from our community that we wanted to highlight. Before I go into looking at some of the specific objectives in the plan, I just wanted to highlight the vision and mission of the project. This was created through the work of the Advisory Committee, and I think the vision, which is Medicine Hat to be an active, caring, connected, healthy, and vibrant community, as well as the mission, really highlights the importance that everyone is included, and everyone has an opportunity and a voice towards having, creating greater well-being in our community. So, there's a lot of words on this, but I really do like this slide because it highlights the important fundamental truths that really guide our reasoning behind how this plan was developed and how we plan to carry it and implement it. As I discussed earlier, the complexity of well-being cannot be understated here, and we each have our own individual perceptions of well-being, how we respond individually to systems, to experiences, and to challenges. So, we really need to consider that when developing the plan and objectives and actions, we really wanted to ensure our plan focused on prevention as well. Unless we get to the root of issues, we can continually address things at the crisis point, but we're never going to get to any meaningful change if we don't do that. Prevention is the core of this work. We also need to consider how this work aligns with work already being done around the objectives and ensure that we're not overlapping services, but also supporting the work of other departments and other organizations in what they're doing, and being collaborative in that approach. And finally, resilience, it's the key to it all. It's working to build resilience. We can't always anticipate challenges, nor can we always prevent things from happening, but if we help to build that capacity, both at the individual level and at the organizational level, then we're better able to respond to all of those unknown challenges as they come and address them more productively and positively in the future. So, the other fundamental aspects that are the pillars to well-being. So, these pillars were identified through our engagement process. So, Jake compiled all the results of what people said, and these were the key kind of themes that came out of that engagement. And these are what we aligned our objectives with. So, when we get further in the presentation, you'll see what I'm talking about. I just want to highlight these. So, how do we start to address these pillars? We've developed a list of nine strategic objectives with a total of 52 potential actions, so that's a lot. But as you can see, it really illustrates the breadth and the depth of the work that can be done and needs to be done in Medicine Hat. And these actions build on the existing work, support capacity building, and increase the resilience to support networks in the city. So, we will get into the nine objectives now. I am not going to read every action on the slide. I would let you look at that and read that yourself, but I'm just going to do a brief overview of what this objective really is talking about, what it means. And I think Director Prestaco mentioned previously that when we went through this engagement process, we checked back with those who had previously provided input, including members of the Advisory Committee and our own city departments, to ensure that we're hitting the mark, and any priorities that their departments had that they were already working on, or any community projects, were reflected in the plan accurately. So, the first objective is reducing poverty in Medicine Hat. So, poverty is defined as the absence of resources and opportunity to fully participate in society. We know that we will likely never eliminate poverty. However, we also know that we have rising living costs, especially and including basic needs, more requests from organizations reporting unprecedented demands for services and supports, and more expectations of municipalities to help address some of these needs. So, our actions related to this objective focus on looking at how policies, strategies, and practices within the city, but also address the community and various levels of government impact, how they impact well-being, and how we can work to address some of those immediate needs, but also looking at some long-term solutions. Objective two is enhancing community safety. So, we've seen disruptive behaviors threatening our safety and often our perception of safety. And we also know that these behaviors are often rooted in factors like inequality, economic stress, mental health and addictions, and systemic discrimination. So, the actions under this objective involve a balanced approach between prevention, intervention, enforcement, and information and education. This objective really focuses on collaborating with schools, recreation facilities, and community partners, and also looking at ways that we can advocate, act as champions in areas where expanded or tailored services might be required. Considering the municipality's role in the promotion of health and wellness as it relates to well-being, so while not all of these are our mandate, how can we work to champion? And to champion means sometimes can be vocal about the issue, working with others to make changes, and sometimes about removing obstacles. Supporting lifelong learning. Learning happens throughout the lifespan, from a young child to aging adults, from formal education to informal workshops and experiences. And it's really important for us to support learning and to support individual growth because that's what builds resiliency. And resiliency is especially important in a world like ours that is changing constantly. One of the ones I wanted to highlight here is promoting, promoting, promote intergenerational learning. So, when young, and when young children and adults engage, they share perspectives and experiences and make connections in meaningful ways. So, that's just one way we can help support lifelong learning. Objective five is to create and enhance economic opportunities. So, you might think, well, we already have an economic development plan. Yes, we do, and this objective is about supporting that plan and recognizing that access to employment and economic opportunities create pathways to enhancing well-being for individuals and businesses and the community through financial stability, but also creating a sense of purpose and inclusion and belonging for people. This objective is about how we help build the collaboration in our community and how we are being thoughtful about economic growth and thinking about what do we need to promote and what do we need to be aware of as our community grows? What are those considerations? Embracing, enhance, and celebrate diversity. This is about considering the unique differences among individuals and groups, and truly valuing and embracing these differences as vital to our community's richness, driving innovation, creativity, and equity. And this means diversity on many different levels, including physical, accessibility, and inclusive places and practices. Seven is taking meaningful action towards reconciliation. This objective focuses on our shared commitment to addressing historical and ongoing impacts of colonialism by repairing relationships between Indigenous and non-Indigenous people with respect and equity. This is about advancing our reconciliation commitments and partnering and engaging with our elders, our knowledge keepers, and our Indigenous-serving organizations, and assuring their voices and perspectives are heard and understood, and also encouraging and celebrating our Indigenous histories and our culture. Objective eight is empowering residents to be engaged participants in the community. This is one of my favorite objectives. I really do believe that power and engagement and the importance of positive and meaningful engagement to build our community. The more people are engaged in positive ways, the more ownership they take in our community, the pride, and the more they participate, and we will see that in our community. And we really do believe that we can have the greatest impact by starting at that neighborhood level and building from there. And finally, our last objective, nine, is enhancing organizational efforts to support well-being. So, strengthening our capacity means clearly defining roles, adopting preventative and systemic approaches, championing change, and modernizing our policies. Really, it's about leveraging data, community input, and best practices in our decision-making, while aligning our resources and also measuring our impact. So, the development, the next steps are the development of their implementation plan, which will include looking at those 52 actions, prioritizing them, and then identifying what actions, or what actual work can we do, related to those actions, to move forward with this plan. So, it'll also measure, look at measuring success. How do we know, what data do we have, and how do we know that we're actually having an impact? So, that'll be a big part of the implementation plan. And then, of course, we'll continue to engage and partner with our community organizations and to make sure we can drive this forward, and with our, all of our city staff in various Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any questions from anybody in the circle? Counselor Knodel.
Thank you, Counselor McGrogan. I just want to say thank you for such a huge undertaking. This is a massive amount of data that you would have collected, from anecdotal to sticky notes to talking circles, like it's massive, and it's been, it's been several years since I took part, I think it was a municipal mingle where you were collecting, and you had a board, and people were putting, and that was just one of however many events where you were gathering data. So, I loved seeing the scanned stickies and seeing people's real handwriting, and I thought that was really special. We only have so much authority as municipal government, and municipal, talk with my hands always, people comment about that. We only have so much authority, and I'm curious if you strategically drew connections between what the MGA tells us we can do. You did allude to how you've made connections to different policies that exist today, but I'm over, like, it takes a long time as a counselor sitting here for me to even understand the magnitude of the guiding documents that we have to follow and that staff have to follow. But I'm just curious if you and your staff took time to look at what the MGA says we can and can't do, and if that affected the work that was done in this document.
I, I can answer some of it, but I can say, we didn't look at the MGA. I don't know if Jake, I think Jake did in his, in his overview of all the documents, for sure. And I also know that a lot of this work is the work that we do already, so it's really just building on that and setting those priorities. Where do we, you know, every day, my department goes, okay, we get drawn into various different areas. Can you be on this committee? Can you help us with this, or whatever? And so, it's just a matter of us saying, okay, these are our priorities, and here's where we really need to work, and now where, how are we going to get deeper into this and really make some movement and show that we've made some changes in those areas? So, certainly, we'll look at the MGA, but...
Can I ask a follow-up? I hope that that didn't put you on the spot. And the only, and I'm bringing it up because of my growing awareness of how do we have the most impact? And you have such a great deal of information now, and so many organizations in the community that often do fall outside of the work that we do. We will fund them or contribute to the funding plan that they have, but sometimes, like, it's sometimes mixed with provincial funding, too, or it's outside of our scope of practice. So, I'm just curious how your team navigates that. How do we filter out what we can and can't do when there's such a great deal of impact we want to have, and how do we not waste our energy? Because you have, there's only so many of you in your department, and how do we know that you're not, like, Lee and I have talked about burnout and how that's so, so likely in a, in a community-minded department, so I'm just curious about that. Thank you.
Yeah, through the chair. So, that's part of the reason we're setting priorities, because, you know, what are some things that we can do right away? And... And like, getting this plan together and developing the items related to the tactics, I guess, related to the actions is one of the biggest things, right? Okay, how are we going to do this? What does that entail? What does that look like? And then, how do we prioritize it? What is a priority? Because we're gonna, we can't do 52 actions plus all the tasks related to them, you know, in the first year. So let's, we're going to sit down and decide what are priorities? And then just ensure that we are working towards the plan's objectives, first of all. Yeah, so it's ongoing, but certainly we'll have to look at what is priority. And after the first year, after we've worked through some of those actions and related tactics, what do we need, what do we need further for resources going into 2026, 2027? What does that look like? So we'll definitely have to take a look at that.
It looks like Leah would like, Leah would like to comment, if that's okay.
I was prepared to comment. Shawna did an excellent job. But that's our, part of our next step is our implementation plan. So we've already talked, and we're starting to work in parallel to this process. What are our short, medium, and long-term objectives? And how do we fit that in? So it's a prioritization process, as Shawna suggested. And then with each of them, too, we're going to look at our role. So what is our role under this action item that's identified? Are we the convener? Are we the funder? Are we collaborating with another organization? And if so, identifying for each of those actions, who might the lead agencies be and who should be involved and around the table for those discussions? So absolutely, what is truly our role? And our role could change with each of those, but looking short, medium, long term, who's involved and what role does each party have?
Thank you. I'm finished. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Robbins? Okay, Counselor Robbins?
Yes, thank you. I'm through the chair. Thank you for the presentation. It was really concise, but there's a lot, the plan has a lot of words in it. And I like that the pillars have the themes next to them so that I can see how they're connected together. So I think that the presentation has been helpful to sort of say, this is what we're thinking in the big picture, but there's really so much detail in here. And very helpful to have. And I did like as well, the handwritten pieces. That was really great to see. And I did participate in, I think maybe Community Vibrancy Board in one of these sessions. Could have been something else I was participating, I was putting things on sticky notes, anyway. But anyway, I like then, when you go into the objectives, what the potential actions are. So I will really look forward to hearing the next step is like, these are the actions, and now how we're going to implement those actions will be very interesting. And some of them, like, I just was looking at the one, promote living wage employers. That's something that council had, is an idea that had sort of bubbled up at council at one point. So I'm really glad that those ideas aren't just like hovering out there. They're actually like, somebody grabbed them and put them in a document that other people can follow and implement. So I'm excited for the future now that this plan is in place. And it's maybe a bad analogy, but I view community development as like, these are the helpers of the community. But like, in any situation where there's a crisis and someone needs to help, someone needs to organize the helpers. And some people have certain skills, some people have certain mandates, some things the provincial government will do, something the city can do. Sometimes we're the funder, sometimes we're the collaborator. And I think that it's such a, must have been a very difficult task to sort of encircle all of those and say, now we can like identify. Because without identifying the task and who's responsible and how it's going to work, we'll never get the task done. So while your department is helping in the big picture, I think this will help the community understand why this department exists. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I just, I had one comment. I'm just listening to the presentation, hearken me back to a day at, on April the 11th, I went to the Big Eagle Room at Medicine, at the Medicine College. And I think for the public out there to get a grasp of what this is, because it's very philosophical, it seems, in nature, but I have to say, that was such a great example of where your department and the city engages with communities. And the spinoffs, because the whole thing was around dance floor resurfacing, but it just became so much more through the day. And I really appreciated the day, and I know that I mentioned to Managing Director Hutter that was, I just so appreciate the work that was done. And if that's the type of work that generates economic development even, because I thought of all the vision that came out of what we could do with that teepee site. And so if that times, I guess it's nine different objectives, if we could just keep multiplying, it'd be really good. So thank you. Okay, well, we'll move on. So thanks so much for the presentation. We'll move on to the second presentation, which is community service level inventory. We have Manager of Municipal Services Business Support Jared Dickey is going to present in relation to this topic.
Good evening, members of council. Really appreciate the opportunity tonight to present a status update on the community service levels. Joining me tonight are two members of the Corporate Strategy Analysis Team, Gareth Chudley and Jonathan Lenowski. These two members of the team have been instrumental in collaborating with the various departments across the organization, having multiple meetings and collecting information contained in the presentation and the inventory document. In October of 2024, council accepted and ratified focused strategic priorities, associated action plans. And the purpose tonight is to provide council with an update on the inventory and those priorities related to creating organizational capacity for effective and efficient service delivery. This priority identified three action items. Inventory and define current service levels led by corporate planning and performance. Define required and desired service levels led by finance. And implement a workforce strategy led by people services, which is out of the scope of this project. The focus of this presentation and the supporting material on the inventory, however, we will look at also providing an overview of the proposed approach for the next phase of the project, which is to determine the cost to provide these services to the community. Administration felt it was prudent to provide council with an update and hear feedback and have discussion on the project if it's achieving the desired outcomes outlined within council's priorities. The city provides a wide variety of services to the community. Some of those services are behind the scenes, commonly referred to as supporting services. Although the public may not see what goes on behind the scenes, these services directly support the delivery of services to the community. The scope of this project is to gather the inventory and provide council and the community with a comprehensive inventory of public-facing services provided by the operating departments of the city. Community service levels are expressed in non-technical terms that describe the extent and quality of a service. They also include a service level description that briefly describes the service output and may include a reference to underlying rules, regulations, city bylaws that govern the services to ensure consistency, accountability, and quality. The work that's been completed thus far includes, we started by doing a municipal scan to determine the appropriate approach to this phase of the project. As you're aware, service levels are an integral part of municipal government and public service. Service levels integrate with several other strategic plans and frameworks that support the community. Corporate planning and performance work closely with our public-facing operating departments to collect input and provide a summary document of the many services provided to the community. In February, we met with executive leadership team to ensure the content was consistent and alignment, in alignment with expectations. The content was then reviewed and revised based on the feedback, and the consolidated inventory that's attached to tonight's meeting package was prepared. CPP also requested we collect the most frequently asked questions from the community, collected typically through two-by-fourteen requests, to ensure that our inventory captured hot topics or items that were concerns to the community. The community service level inventory is a result of collaboration between various departments within the municipality. The inventory articulates the external services provided by the city, ensuring the organization operates effectively with the end user in mind. It offers an overview of the services provided to the community, aiding in informed decision-making related to resource allocation. The document is organized by functional area. Each section includes the division, the service name, description, service level standard, and outlines the services that the public can expect to receive from the city. We work collaboratively with groups from corporate services, development and infrastructure, energy, land, and environment, general government, as well as public services. The consolidated document in tonight's meeting package includes a detailed list of services provided to the community. This document represents the first draft and reflects the current state of services that the city provides. The sample on this screen is from Parks and Recreation. The document is organized by division and department, and then sub-department. Each section provides a high-level overview of the services provided to the community, and the table provides additional details about the services provided by that operating team. This includes a community service name. In this example, manicured turf maintenance. A community service description, which is turf grass that is healthy and free of disease and well-maintained for recreational and wellness activities, as well as a community service standard. And this articulates the standards in non-technical terms and is an example that provides how the Parks and Recreation provides care for Class A, B, and C turf. Administration will continuously review, evaluate, enhance these services and processes and delivery methods to ensure that we're meeting the evolving needs of the community. Therefore, this inventory will be reviewed and updated annually to make sure it remains relevant, accurate, and represents at the time the current community service levels. The next step for this project is to work with our finance team to provide costs to these services to the community. When undertaking this, there's a risk of administration not meeting the desired outcome, timelines, time, and effort required, as resources will need to be changed, depending on the level of detail contained within the document. And so to ensure expectations are managed and met, we felt it was prudent to create alignment prior to moving into Phase Three of the project, which is determining the costs to provide these services. So as I mentioned, our finance, our financing, control, and reporting team will be a key resource to determine the cost to provide these services. The estimated timelines to have a final itemized inventory with cost to council is early, or end of Q2, early Q3, so June, July of this year. Thank you for your time. The presentation was concise. I know the document is quite long. I think it's 54 pages. I felt it was appropriate that I give you the information, and we have a discussion if we're meeting council's expectations.
Excellent. That was a lot quicker than I thought it was going to be. Thank you. I read the, I surfed this, I thought this is going to take a while, so appreciate the conciseness. Counselor Knodel is first up on the speaker list.
Thank you, Counselor McGrogan. So my question is along the same vein as the last presentation, because ultimately everything we do ties back to our guiding document. So I do notice that in your community service standard column, that you have bolded the MGA sections that your particular service standard is related to. So we have things that have that tag or that bolded text, but we have things that don't have that bolded text. And I'm just curious, how many, is anything that you list that doesn't have that bolded text beyond what we're expected to do? Or does it just not fall within a section that's specific enough to tag it? So that's question one, and then I'll probably have a follow-up, if that's okay.
Great question. Through the chair to Counselor Knodel. Yeah, so we intentionally, whenever there's a rule, a regulation, or a bylaw, we've identified it, we flagged it with your, with regards to the MGA. Not everything that we do, well, everything we do is governed by the MGA, but may not have a specific section within the MGA. So it could be a procedure document, it could be anything like that. We made it easier for the community to navigate and find why certain things are done a certain way, and where appropriately provided links as well. So yeah, the document could be much bigger if we included all the content. The first round, we were probably 400 pages in content, and we've narrowed that down to the 54 pages that we have tonight. But yeah, where it was appropriate and where there is legislation, we flagged the appropriate section of the MGA.
Can I ask a follow-up? Thank you so much, through the chair. That's helpful. I think we've had conversations around the council table about the concept of how do we figure out exactly what we have to do so that we're doing that for sure? And then what we choose to do, or how do we, what we need to, what territory we need to expand into, because ultimately, our city depends on it, and it falls kind of in the realm of what we have to do. When you were creating this document, do you feel like there's any areas, and again, this kind of airs in the territory of, I don't want things to be seen as like non-necessities, but is, most of the things that we do are very, very important. I understand that. But is there anything that as you are going through this or talking to your departments that we're kind of, we're erring on the side of like, okay, this is something that we've done for a long, long time, but it's outside of what our expectations or what the expectations of our governing documents are? Or, you know, it kind of, I think you're following.
Yep. Through the chair to Counselor Knodel. So yeah, it's, as with everything, we have a limited budget, too. And so it's about resource allocation, and I think that will hopefully come through when we provide the full document with the costing. And so as you can appreciate, we'll use parks as an example, as we can have a perfectly manicured boulevard, but is that the standard that we want to have as a community? Probably not, because it would be cost prohibitive, right? And so there are certain parks or certain standards in certain areas, and that's why the document kind of outlines, okay, this is why we do certain, Class A is this level. We're going to water it twice a week, and we're going to mow it twice a week, and the grass height is this, and we're going to put weed control downwards, Class C is maybe less intensive, and we've been purposeful in that. So there is always, in the discretionary area, there's always a scale, right? And so that's where, like I said, it comes down to budget and how much time, and obviously community expectations. Our community expects green grass, flowers, all those beautiful things that we're very fortunate to have. So that's what the document kind of outlays, is it doesn't identify a specific park. There is a map that shows or a list that shows, okay, park, this is the description, this is the class, and now we can point back and say, okay, this is what the community can expect.
Last comment, if that's okay? It's not a question? And I mean, ultimately, I understand this is very, very valuable, but when we can, when we can do what you're describing, even just for me as somebody that I feel like is ultimately learning forever as I sit in this chair, it's just so, it's like, yes, it's nice to have that direct tie, where if somebody's asking, we can direct them to a document like this and say, yeah, this is, you know, we have to decide, there's an economic, there's an economic opportunity costs if you decide to go down this route. So I'm very grateful to have this in front of us, along with all the other information that's being presented tonight. Thank you.
Managing Director Hutter, did you have something on this particular question or comment?
Yes, thank you. And through the chair, we don't mention it in this document, but we do benchmark, compared to other municipalities, things like the amount of pools that we have per resident. Actually, just a few hours ago, Director Will and Manager Richter presented on the Parks and Rec Master Plan, the annual report. And within that report, it shows that we provide four times the amount of aquatic opportunities per 10,000 residents than, I think than the average municipality in Alberta, and two times when it comes to trails. So perhaps that's something, it doesn't relate to MGA requirements, but it does relate to what other municipalities are providing. So perhaps that's something we could add into here for the public to be aware of.
Thank you. Counselor Van Dyke.
Yes, thank you, through the chair. My question is around communicating to the public. So this document is great, and I know when it's done, it's going to be even bigger. I'm wondering if, in addition to I'm wondering if, in addition to this document, I'm assuming will be posted on our website where the reports and studies and that section. But I know already in like the business permitting section on the website, it gives what you can expect your wait times are going to be in that area. Are we going to, I mean, we can't do it for everything, but in certain areas, are we going to make sure that the information from this service plan is also included on the individual pages of the website that they may pertain to?
Yep, thank you. Good question. Thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Van Dyke. So this document is a combination of lots of documents. So we have business plans, we have websites, we have process documents, we have policies and that type of thing. So it's now in a consolidated place, which is nice. If there's information that you think is more appropriate or also would, or be beneficial in other forums, like the Planning and Development Services website, certainly we can look at adding those components.
Counselor Sharps.
Thank you, Councilor McGrogan. Just a quick question through the chair. When I'm looking at the community service levels, and your last statement was to do the cost allocation, is there gonna be also like maybe a column that shows the cost recovery that we currently get? So like, for example, ball diamonds, we actually charge use for those. So it wouldn't be a straight, it costs us $10,000 because we do recover, we have some recovery. So it'd be nice to see if we're at a loss, or if we're at a break even, or...
Yep. Thank you through the chair to Counselor Sharps. Perfect. That would be, that's good feedback for us as we take it away and move into Phase Three. If that's something that council would wish to see, then we can definitely incorporate that into the document.
Counselor Robbins.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair. Thank you for all of this. The nerd in me is really enjoying the tables. I would like to see all 400 pages, but I realize maybe 54 is enough for me to chew on at the moment. I just, I'm looking forward to seeing the next step. So I think I said this when I voted for this, or maybe I said it in my mind, but I was at one of the elected officials courses, and we were talking about financial statements was what the, this course was about. And they put us into little breakout rooms on a Teams meeting. And the question in my little breakout room of like five or six counselors from across the province was, does your municipality have a service inventory? And everybody else said yes, and I was like, um, can I pretend my mic doesn't work? Most of them were from villages, or summer villages in my group. I was the only mid-sized city counselor there, and so I realized that their inventory was a lot less complicated than our inventory would be. So it was something that I had hoped eventually I would see, and I'm very pleased I'm at this table to actually be able to see it all laid out. And when people ask where their taxes go, I could point them to this document and say, pick one of these, pick anything in this table, and that's where your taxes are going. I'm just gonna give one little example of, you know, when I read it, what I think is, as a taxpayer myself, of course, so I'm looking at dam operations and maintenance, would not have a clue that that was something that the city needed to worry about. So I can see what the description is, you have to keep the infrastructure, and then I can see that it includes graffiti removal, sign maintenance, vegetation removal, outlet cleaning, which all makes sense. And for me, sort of setting up the next council in my mind, is that they could then say, once they know all this cost, okay, well, if we don't remove graffiti every time there's graffiti, or we only move graffiti once a year, how does that change the budget for this item? Not like getting too far into the weeds of it, but understanding how each choice we make, the lever it moves, and then that affects budget, which we do have control over. So I like the way that this is defined. I'll look forward to the next columns in the table. And I also like that when you refer to, like, there's an Alberta dam and canal safety directive, I would not have known that, and obviously it's important. And obviously, somebody in the city is taking care of it, and obviously that comes at a cost. So again, I think it's gonna be really helpful to define, to continue to define not only what we do, how much it costs to do it, and if you change it, how will that cost go up or that cost go down? So yeah, this is a very comprehensive abbreviated document, which obviously has a lot of more, a lot more source documents, and so I'll look forward to see how it develops over time. But I think you're on the right path in my mind. Those extra columns will be helpful for future councils to make decisions. Thank you.
Counselor Hirsch.
Thanks. Through the chair, I'm quite overjoyed to see this, and the reason, I think, is this is what we do, and, but yet, I think we just do it, but yet we don't explain. And I think some of the things that we've done, that I've certainly kind of tried to promote a very long time is, and I'll just re, kind of put some notes. So the public expects a well-run, efficient municipality, spending taxpayers' dollars with appropriateness. And when I first got on council, you know, call it way back when, when I would ask some questions, it was always, well, we've always done it this way. And for me, it was like down the old chalk, just scratching, and it just would drive me nuts, but, and so one of the things that I had brought up, and I'm glad we had the strat planning, because it was a chance to have that conversation about, and I, and my analogy was two flip charts. One was, under the MGA, what do we have to provide to the citizenry? And what does that look like? And if we have to follow it, let's execute with excellence. The second flip chart is all the optional stuff. And that doesn't have to be financial, it might be social, it might be, it's the why are we doing this, and what's the advantage? And it might be, why do we have, going back to Managing Director's Hutter, why do we have above-average amount of trails? Because we value it. And it does cost extra money, and people understand that. And guess what? They'd be willing to pay for that, because A, it's great exercise, it's scenic, it's everything that we're known for. So the second flip chart, which I am feeling that we're going down this road, is what are we doing that's optional? Why are we doing it? Is this something that we should continue to do, or abandon altogether, or maybe either parcel it out to someone else to do it, or the frequency, that sort of thing? So I'm overjoyed to see this, because, you know, I've been advocating for a while, and I think we're down a good path. What I'm wondering, though, is, and I think Counselor Robbins just alluded to it, so we're gonna have this service level inventory done and completed, which is a body of work. So I want to congratulate you. Lifting a heavy object is tough to do if you don't, and if you have a team, many hands make light work. But I'm wondering, where do we go from here in the short term, the medium term, and the long term? And I'm even thinking of the departmental who would maybe go through this exercise to go, okay, is it something that we should be continuing doing? Should we discontinue or alter? And what's the frequency? Like, when this gets documented, I just don't want it to get dusty. So what does that look like going forward? Now that you've done the heavy lifting, now it's just tweaking, right? So just your thoughts?
Yeah, no, great question. And through the chair to Counselor Hirsch. So to me, this is an evolution. This is version 1.0. We'll continue to evolve this year over year and tweak it where appropriate. When we look, when we did our jurisdictional scan, there's a wide scale of community inventories. I'm surprised we're the only one that doesn't have one, but I think it can be as broad and as in-depth as we want. We felt appropriate to bring it forward as a, in bite-sized chunks. As I mentioned, we're only looking at public-facing departments right now. There's a whole host of things that the city does behind the scenes, our fleet, our facilities that support the operational groups are not in this document at this time. So I think that's the evolution, and the maturity of this going forward is, we can, we were very specific with the scope of what council requested, and so that we could deliver it on time and have it in front of you in a timely manner. But do I think it can evolve and become better? Absolutely. There's like, there's lots of municipalities that incorporate business plans, budgets, KPIs, outcomes into their service level document. And so to me, that's the gold star. That's where I would like to move to eventually. Again, that takes time, resources, and again, the maturity of the process. And so I do think this was the first step. I think there's many steps to come. So I'm excited, in two, three, four years from now, what this document looks like will be much more robust than it is today, but it is a first step, and I think it does shine a light on all the great things, like even when we were working through it, I'm like, oh, I didn't even know we did that. And so we do offer a very broad spectrum of services to the community, and so hopefully, like I said before, this is a single repository. It's a document that everybody can go to, it's, you can navigate it, you can find, if you don't know what you can want to find, or if you're looking for parks, you can search parks, and it'll take you to the appropriate section. So hopefully that answers your question.
It doesn't, if I can just bear a follow-up. So on a whole different level as well, to inform the public, just as you indicated, and you're a city staff, and you're doing the aha moment, and I get it, you're not in every department. I guess that's my question. So when you did the kind of jurisdictional scan within, within all the different departments that you would have had, and your team would have had interactions with, is there, what was the theme of your response when you asked those questions? Was it about time? Is it, you know, I would just like to know the level of interaction that you got in terms of staffing, the willingness to contribute, the willingness to kind of, because this kind of gets passed, to your point, if we let this run, it almost gets to a point where you get, you can solicit feedback from the frontline staff that says, you know, why are we doing this exercise? We should have went to this years ago, type of thing. And I'm a big fan of, you know, sometimes the brilliance is in the simple responses, and the simple reactions, and the simple implementation. So just your thoughts on how the reception was with each department?
Yeah, no, great question. Through the chair to Counselor Hirsch. So every department, Medicine Hat employees are proud, they're excited to share what they do, and that's why the document was so long to begin with. I think they were like, oh, great, I get to tell my story. Everybody's story is a little bit longer or shorter than others, but I think it was very enthusiastically received. Obviously, it was like, oh, more work, and we're knocking on their door to get information, but at the same time, they were willing. It wasn't like we were creating new content. The content was there, it was just dispersed across different documents, like I said earlier, whether it was on their website or an internal document, it was, like I said, it was, we didn't meet resistance from any group that we worked with. They were happy to participate, and we were more just coordinating, like, give us what you have, we'll distill it and get feedback, and working with executive, how do we make this more concise? So it's, and as a member of the public, some people want to read 400 pages, but I know most people don't, especially myself. Like, if we can get it more condensed, we want to make it sure, and like I said, there's links, there's, if you want more information, you can dig right into the weeds and find out more information on the website, or the, if you want to read the MGA, great, go for it, that type of thing. So there's lots of content there, it's just, we tried to keep it concise and provide people with more information if they're want to search.
I just love the ability, if they want to scratch more, you can scratch more. So, and to your point, you know, I've been on the receiving end, the people that would do that due diligence, and we all know that that's in our community. I think, you know, people are passionate, and some really pay attention in terms of how the dollars and cents are spent, and that's what we're here to represent as well, so, in general. So thanks for your work. I know it's a great body of work, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd just say the same. This is exactly the type of document that I think would have been so helpful, you know, through budget process, through, and I, you know, and you used to call it an evolution, and I really like that, because I was thinking about how you could layer this into, you know, the amount of people you need, what that costs, the equipment that you need, what that costs. If we want to go to a Level III lawn-cutting service, blah, blah, whatever, to a Level II, what, how do we shift those resources? It just seems to simplify everything, and the work is all upfront. Like, this is a lot of work, and acknowledge that. So didn't expect to get something this, I guess, meaty this soon, but I think it's just an amazing kind of first step, well, it's a great step period. Somebody called it, this is nice to have, but to me, it's essential. And I'm hoping that the next council just can really appreciate this and be able to make decisions based off this and go to one place. I think what happens, you get people that are elected, you come in, you know parts of different things, but this is a place where you can, it's more or less a central warehouse. You could go here, okay, what services are offered? And I really like the idea of the behind-the-scenes stuff. There's so many services that the city offers to support those that are out with the shovel in their hand, doing the police work, whatever they're doing. So I think eventually, people to see that, and say, oh, okay, that's what it takes. Okay, I didn't know that. And people on council and the decision-makers, and you at budget time. So anyway, thank you for this. Okay, we're moving on to the last item on the agenda, which is the Transportation Master Plan. And it looks like Director Municipal Works Stanley Noakowski is going to lead the presentation. Oh, I don't, yes, go ahead, she's manager.
Through the chair, if Managing Director Bohan can just have a quick introduction, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, super. Thank you.
Good evening, council. This evening, you're going to be hearing from John Ashton, a highly experienced professional engineer, along with Stanley Noakowski and Sandeep Parikh. They've played a pivotal role, leadership role, in the development of this project. Over the past 18 months, the team has worked closely with a dedicated team of internal subject matter experts and external consulting engineers. Through a rigorous and collaborative process, including extensive community engagement, they've produced three comprehensive reports that are before you tonight for review. These reports reflect not only technical excellence, but also a deep commitment to public input and strategic planning. With that, I'll hand it over to Director Noakowski.
Thank you.
Thank you, Managing Director Bohan. I see you stole my notes again. I'll just do a quick introduction here on who we have online, and then I'll pass it over to John Ashton, our project manager for this, for this project. Online, we have Stephen Schwartz with Associated Engineering. He was the project manager for them on this project. Also from Associated, we have Monique Boudry. And then also Ryan Martenson and Tyler Golly from Martenson Golly Limited. So those were the consultants that we used on this project. I would also like to do an acknowledgement or a shout-out to our corporate communications group, who did a phenomenal job, worked lockstep with our team in the stakeholder and public engagement process, which was very intense on this project. So a huge shout-out to them. So with that, I will pass it over to John Ashton.
Thank you, everyone. So today, I'm gonna try to get through quite a bit of information in a short amount of time. We will be covering our Transportation Master Plan, our active, and two supporting strategies, the active transportation strategy and transportation safety strategy. So I just want to start off on how we engage to this project. So with the public engagements efforts through the TMP, we combine them with the engagement efforts with the active transportation strategy and the transportation safety strategy, in an effort to reduce engagement fatigue to the public. We kick things off with, as Director Noakowski mentioned, Shape Your City page, which was updated regularly throughout the process. Then followed by that, we had in-person days of learning, where our consulting teams came down, met with internal and external stakeholders. You know, externally, we met with Tourism Medicine Hat, Ever Active Schools, the Viner Center, Chamber of Commerce, Next Steps, to name a few, as well as interest groups like Bike Medicine Hat and Seats. Internally, we collaborated with our planning and development groups, our, sorry, Community Inclusion, Medicine Hat Police Service, Fire, Transit, and the Parks Department. We did take these plans to citywide open houses through the municipal mingles in November 2023 and February 2024, just to bring information to the public initially, and then in February of '24 to advertise the upcoming public survey. So between February '24 and March '24, we engaged in an online survey, which saw 752 respondents to the three strategies. Those responses helped pave the groundwork for our action items policies and how we work towards developing these plans. From there, internally, we had workshops with our internal departments again, followed by a technical submission through our technical coordinating committees to gather final feedback from the departments. And finally, in March of this year, on the 11th and 12th, we engaged in two open houses, one down here at the Esplanade, and another up at the Medicine Hat College. We made sure to stage- We made sure to stage the times and dates and times of these engagements to make sure it was available for everyone, whether the working shift work nine to five. We wanted to make sure everyone had a chance to get to these open houses. So why a transportation master plan? Why do we need to do this? Our transportation master plan is an update from our road systems master plan, which is incorporating guidance and visions from the My Medicine Hat Municipal Development Plan, the MDP, which is related to population growth patterns, anticipated urban development, evolving modes of transportation, parking, and other transportation-related areas. We aligned with the MDP's 2050 horizon, which anticipates a population of 80,000 people. And moving forward, this is known as a transportation master plan 2050. The transportation master plan is driven by trends, mobility, technology, and population growth, and adopts a broader scope than our original road systems master plan from 2013. We aim to address the diverse and evolving transportation needs of our of our city. The previous road systems master plan was primarily focused on vehicular travel and demand modeling and forecasting, forecasting planned future capital upgrades as well, and was based on the growth projections of 75,000 and 95,000 population. The TMP aligns with these with gross rates developed in the MDP and emphasizes policies to support all modes of transportation and emphasizes transit services and improves transit safety for users of all ages and abilities. It'll be a tool to tackle our transportation challenges for all our residents, businesses, and visitors. It'll set a vision for future transportation systems by guiding policies and programs and funding decisions. It'll outline capital and operational action items, and it again aligns with our MDP, this council strategic plan from '23 to '26, and our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So the initially, we developed a vision statement for the transportation master plan, and it is summarized to develop a transportation system that is more economically and environmentally sustainable and supports a spectrum of land uses and intensities, and promotes a more efficient and healthier way, healthier and safer ways for hatters to get around using different modes of transportation. We developed nine guiding principles for this for the transportation master plan, which include active transportation, safety, economic sustainability, transportation culture, land use, public transit, environmental sustainability, technology, and climate resilience. And we took these into account when we moved forward to develop our policies and action So the policies are shaped through the public and stakeholder engagement to address gaps in the mobility network while aligning with the emerging trends and technologies. These these policies support an overarching vision of the TMP and are guided by this by the nine guiding principles. So under the TMP, we have 24 actions associated with the road network, three action items associated with transit, two action items associated with active transportation, two action items associated with safety, three action items associated with land use, and four action items associated with the transportation culture. So as part of the TMP, the future road network strategy includes the location-specific improvements, which are both development and non-development related, that will be constructed in the future to accommodate the expected growth of the city while balancing the needs of all road users. Some of the projects for associated with plan, some planned improvements related to development are South Boundary Road from 13th Avenue to 10th, the Southwest Connector again, and that's that Southwest section of the city, 13th Avenue from Stracken Road Southeast to Third, South Boundary Road. Planned improvements not related to development will be Third Street Northeast, Northwest, and Riverside. Intersection upgrades at South Boundary Road and Southlands Drive, and Kingsway Avenue from Spencer Street to South Railway. Additionally, we have improvements that are based on the outcomes of the TMP, and those are a traffic signal upgrade program, a traffic signal coordination project, and comprehensive corridor studies. These corridors include Dummel Road, 13th Avenue, College Avenue, Division Avenue North, Kingsway, Stracken, Maple Avenue. For our transportation safety strategy, we followed the same process in developing our vision statement. And we wanted to reflect input from the stakeholders and to and create a transportation safety vision, safety strategy vision that is achievable rather than aspirational. While our ultimate goal of this is a vision zero, zero road-related collisions, we recognize that that may not be overly obtainable. Or, so we will work towards vision zero, zero, to work towards zero fatalities and serious injury collisions in the road transportation system. And our vision to support this is safer mobility for all hazards, hatters, moving towards zero road transportation-related fatalities and serious injuries. And to get into our, to help guide and develop our policies and actions, we had our guiding principles as equitable, proactive, evidence-based, sustainable, and cooperative partnerships. So during the analysis of our road or transportation safety strategy, we had an in-depth look at our collision data, which was obtained from Alberta Transportation, covering the years of January 2010 to December 2021, for a total of 12 years. We do have a detailed analysis of the of this information available in our existing conditions report. During the analysis period, we observed 20,000 collisions. 15,000 of those collisions were within the public road right of way, which nearly 14% of all collisions resulted in injury or a fatality. The societal costs shown on the graph above were estimated using the AT Urban or AT Collision Costs, which were developed using Transport Canada Collision Cost Data from 2006 to 2011 and inflated to reflect 2014 values, using the Consumer Price Index for that time period. What we found is approximately $24 million associated with collision costs per year, which resulted in injury or fatality, and an additional $9 million in collisions, which So currently, what what are we doing currently here at Municipal Works to support road safety? So current initiatives we have out there are our elephant's feet crossing, which you may have seen promoted on social media. Recently, traffic visibility enhancements, so when our traffic signals, sorry, traffic signal visibility enhancements, on our traffic signals, we have these nice black boards or reflective tape. Not everybody does that, and it's something just to promote the visibility of our traffic signals. Speed limit zones, so from 2017 to 2022, speed limit zones were reviewed within the city. We saw some go up, some go down. For instance, downtown here was lowered to 40 kilometers an hour, while we saw South Boundary Road, the speed limit consistently changed to 70 throughout the corridor until you get to the low-level crossing at Parkview Drive, which was also updated to 70 kilometers an hour. We have active school and playground zones, which operate at 30 kilometers an hour from 7:30 to 9:00. Speed radar signs, which we strategically placed through the city in hotspot zones where we have concerns in the residents for speeding. We conducted or are conducting a traffic calming pilot project in two locations within the city. We complete crosswalk warrant analysis on a on a needed as-needed basis as we get calls from residents. We work closely with MHPD for traffic enforcement, whereas if we're conducting reviews for speed, we provide them with the information we observe on our radar data. We've been working with the school divisions on kiss-and-go zones, so essentially a five-minute drop-off zone to allow for kids to, for parents to drop off their kids and move and clear the area. We collaborate with the Southeastern Alberta Traffic Safety Committee, or SEATS, on a regular basis, and we collaborate with Alberta Transportation Economic Corridors on on projects or signage requirement changes or anywhere we interconnect in our road networks. For the transportation safety strategy, we we had five focus areas that we honed in on, and that was a safety management system, vehicle speeds, accommodating our aging population, vulnerable road users, and intersections. The graphic you you see here is just a trend of collision data throughout from 2010 to 2021, projected on for the next 10 years. We have a goal of 5% reduction in collisions or serious collisions in the road network to help us move towards that vision zero. So for the transportation safety strategy, we we have, we've developed policies and action items surrounded our five focus areas. So under safety management, we have 10 actions. Our vehicle speed at strategic locations, we have three. Accommodating our aging population, we have five actions. For vulnerable road users, we have three actions. And for intersections, we have three actions. One of the main objectives of this transportation safety strategy will to be develop a multi-disciplinary road safety committee consisting of city officials, Medicine Hat Police Service, and local advocacy groups to help guide the direction of our road safety initiatives. Onto our active transportation strategy. Again, similar process. We we started with our vision and vision statement, and that's to have an active transportation system that is safe, connected, and accessible and convenient for all people of all ages and abilities to complete all types of trips any day of the year. And from that, we was developed using nine guiding principles for safety, connectivity, accessibility, convenience, community-supported, collaborative, comprehensive, reliable, and all trips. One of the initial steps in in our active transportation strategy was to look at the existing gaps that we have present within our sidewalk network. Currently, we, for the gaps, we prioritize them one to five. So priority one being no sidewalk on either side of the roadway, priority two, essentially no sidewalk on one side of the road. And the priority one and two gaps, we found 20 kilometers of gaps that need to be addressed. Some of the comments we did hear as we're going through this through our surveys, we have narrow sidewalks or missing ramps. I do like to emphasize that Medicine Hat has over 170 kilometers of trail network, whether it's paved or gravel in conjunction with parks. We did hear back that our painted bike lanes are uncomfortable, so that all goes into this existing gaps and issues that we're seeing within the network. And also the crossing of highways, rails, rivers are uncomfortable or unavailable presently. For the active transportation strategy, we we have our actions and tasks centered around infrastructure expansion, where we have eight actions. Maintenance renewal, maintenance and renewal of existing facilities, we have four actions. We have two actions associated with safety that tie into our active or transportation safety strategy, three actions associated with accessibility, accessibility and major barriers, and another three actions associated with education and culture. The map on your screen is the overall cycling network that was developed through this strategy. So where we'd like to see, if we could just wrap this plan up tomorrow, we'd like to have all that done. But it doesn't work that way, and we have to prioritize. So we set to prioritize this plan, we looked at five areas. So the project would need to improve safety, connectivity and remove barriers, improve the accessibility and for vulnerable road users, serves as high-use corridors and areas, and is financially efficient. So over the 10-year horizon of this plan, we identified major cycling routes for Third Street Southeast and to connection into the downtown core, Parkview Drive, to name two, minor cycling routes, we'd be looking at getting rid of our uncomfortable bike lanes on 12th Street Northeast and Northwest and College Drive Southeast, completing corridor studies in conjunction with the TMP on Dummel Road, 13th Avenue, and Third Street Northeast, Northwest, as well as looking at crossing improvements, whether it be on the river or the number one highway. Some programs and initiatives that we are also considering are Safe Roots to School, active transportation in our downtown core, as I briefly mentioned. We are, we have a need to update our design standards. We have to address barriers and complete supporting studies for design. We have to look at development requirements, so what are new developments, whether residential or commercial, doing when they're coming into town? Our ongoing winter maintenance, promotional events and mapping, trail use etiquette, which is something we're working with parks as an action item in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Secure bicycle parking requirements, whether it be on city-owned facilities or working with businesses at, for instance, the Medicine Hat Mall. What do we have approved? What is under our approved budget? And I think that's important to go over what what's happening right now. So 2025, 26 approved budget initiatives include Division Avenue South, our Third Street Northeast, Northwest Corridor Improvement Project in Riverside, our Downtown Project, Third Street Southeast Rehabilitation. We have an ongoing budget for transportation safety, where we're looking to improve pedestrian crossings, visibility of visibility on roadways for line painting, for instance, out on Road Recentennial Way, out near the event center, addressing streetlight gaps in the city. We are, we are also working on pedestrian connectivity, so our active transportation strategy will fill some, will help identify gaps within our network to support our ongoing programs. Sidewalks, we currently run a sidewalk rehabilitation and accessibility programs, where we look to replace damaged sidewalk as well as install ramps where need be, and just restoring our service levels of our sidewalks through maintenance, whether it be mudjacking or replacement, and our snow and ice control. So continuing to maintain and work on our on our facilities as we have. In the future, there's always the the future. So the transportation, in the future with the transportation master plan, we're going to look to establish an intersection improvement safety budget, develop a traffic calming policy and procedures, incorporation of sustainable design elements in capital projects and new development projects, complete a traffic signal upgrade and study and traffic signal upgrade study, complete with traffic signal replacement program, traffic signal timing coordination project, and complete comprehensive corridor studies. The transportation safety strategy, we're looking to develop a road safety committee as one of our primary objectives. Ongoing enhancements for vulnerable road, for the safety of vulnerable road users, advanced network screening, and pilot speed reduction programs outside of the city center. For active transportation, we're work with, we're going to work with city departments and external groups to develop a trail etiquette guideline, incorporate active transportation into capital renewal projects, continuation of the current programs that we're working on for sidewalk gaps and accessibility, look at improvements to the snow and ice control program with respect to adding multi-use pathways or closing down those sidewalk gaps, and secure bicycle parking at key destinations. And finally, going on through the through the process, this will be a plan that is reviewed continually because it is going to set those budget decisions and funding decisions as we move forward. It'll be reviewed yearly and expected updates every 10 years or as we see growth change, growth projections change within the city.
Councillor Hirsch.
Thank you, John. I appreciate, this again, I know is a lot of heavy lifting as well. You know, it's funny, when I was an elected official, someone wise said, your term, you're going to deal with three things for sure. One is roads, two is off-leash bylaw, and three is garbage. And funny enough, I think we nailed garbage because it's been a while. I just remember we got hurt, everyone got insurance, we had the highest insurance rates, and we finally got to an automatic thing. But inevitably, here we are with roads and off-leash bylaw. But so where I'm going with this is, you know, I read with interest your vision statement, and I guess for us, because it's the physical development of the city, I get inundated from people saying, what the heck were you thinking on da, 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 da? And quite frankly, unfortunately, the latest has been Division Avenue. So I get feedback all the time. And so I looked at the business brief on the information brief, and I looked and saw, and I guess my question is, and it's not tongue-in-cheek, but how much feedback does council get on this? We get inundated, but I feel powerless. And then when I look in the information brief, it talks about internal stakeholders, city departments, external, and I don't see council on this. And because we're the, I guess, representatives, I I feel we would benefit from a feel we would benefit from a participation phase in terms of what we as representatives of the community are hearing, and what, and I hear you, I hear the challenge between now and in the next 10 years, and in 2050, I get it. But I tell you, the phone went off the hook, and now the next one, next big concern is Kingsway. So now I get phone calls. I just received one, passed it along, about, wait a minute, I don't want Division Avenue coming down on this road. What are we going to do? Because, and, and I get it, but when we're trying to adapt to all. And where I'm going with this is, I just listened to the province of Alberta, talking about the direction to reduce infrastruc, physical infrastructure for the bikes, et cetera. And what's happening is because now that's interfering in the efficient movement of goods and services and people within the community. And I'm thinking about major intersections, major thoroughways, et cetera. And unfortunately, then I think about Division Avenue. So how do we deal with that? I, in my, my job, I traveled to Lethbridge lots, and they have massive infrastructure changes in terms of bike lanes, et cetera, which has actually created a huge headache from snow removal to slowing down the efficiencies in terms of that, and spent a lot of money. But yet I hear the province of Alberta saying, "Hey, can you dismantle all that stuff? Because we're just getting so many complaints," et cetera. So I, I don't know, and I get a lot of feedback saying, "Did they, did the staff come and find out the turning radius on Division Avenue? Because I've got a trailer, and now I can't even go on, on the main road with my holiday trailer." So I know a lot of, and it's not a multitude of questions. I just want your feedback in regards to kind of where my, where I'm going and my thoughts in terms of, how much does council get to chew on this a little bit and provide direction on the vision and all that kind of stuff? And can you bring some comfort to the people that are thinking about Kingsway now as the next one? And it's, it's just real. I get it all the time. So.
No, for sure. As, as much as you get it, we, we get it through service requests and phone calls. On a project, we have to remember too, this plan is at a 10,000-foot look on the city's transportation network. To get down into the granularity of each project, we are looking at public engagement, public open houses, we one-on-one communication and consultation with businesses before we, you know, put that final, "This is what we're doing," out to the public. So there's not going to be a, as historically may have been in the last 10 years, where we do a rehabilitation project, what you see is what you get. The, the differences we're making now started with our South Railway project, where we had one-on-one consultation with businesses and open houses, which transitioned into Division, which is currently being done with our Third Street Northeast, Northwest project, which will be presented at the municipal mingle here on May 2nd, I believe it is. So we are trying to, you know, when it comes to the vision of, of this project and this, this system, or this, these plans at that 10,000-foot look, we do expect, and I think I saw a lot of councillors at our open houses, we expect some involvement as if you're a resident of the city and not a councillor, to provide your feedback through that open house, through the, through the surveys online.
So I appreciate the feedback, but with respect, I can't accept that. And what I'm, what I'm seeing is I would love, I think the council and the physical development of the city should be a pretty contingent part on the development we're in. Because, again, we are the representatives. When we go to the municipal mingles, and I appreciate that active participation part, but I think from the development point of view, I get an, I get an earful. I get a good understanding in terms of some of the demands. And here's the, here's, I always, I'll give you an analogy. So over the years, we had tennis courts. And tennis courts seem to have run its course and got replaced slowly but surely by pickleball. And all of a sudden, now pickleball's the thing. We now have 20 pickleball courts up in Big Marble. And I think about that often when it comes to even active transportation. So right now, we're talking about the vehicle, and I think that's just the dominant, you know, efficient movement of traffic, et cetera, and people want and need to get to work on time, or, you know, run around with their kids and doing sporting events. And I think it's sometimes, I just want to make sure we don't miss that mark. I know that there's, and I think of a bunch of other allied groups that are out there that are saying, "Hey, we want our piece too." And I get it. As that develops and comes to fruition in terms of, let's call it numbers, let's call it ability for us to kind of go back to your vision statement to say, yes, we are incorporating to a certain degree. I just don't want to get down to a road where we start doing things in terms of, of, of financial investment that at the end of the day, we, we regret it, we have to dismantle, and that sort of thing. So I think it's prudent that we do what we're doing with an idea that, in a lot of ways, we kind of have status quo, and we need to kind of keep that, but yet still vision cast a little bit to the community to say, "Hey, this is the trends, this is what we're seeing." But I just don't want it to be what we got going on now, getting thrown out the window, and then incorporate something that I think would probably alienate the majority to deal with some things that are going to be in the future. And I, I know that's a hard recipe to enact and put together, because you're trying to vision cast in addition to doing the status quo. But I really feel, and I've known this, felt this for a long time, our impact, I absolutely feel helpless as a councillor in determining the physical development of the city of Medicine Hat. And I don't, and I'm just wondering if, how that could be remediated or corrected.
Well, on a, sorry, to the chair, on a project-specific level, those will come to council for approval, whether it be through a budget process or budget amendment. So when the, it's anticipated when there's a budget request coming through for a Kingsway project, you, there should be an idea of what we want to accomplish through that project, whether it's through the design, through the engagement, and how we will engage through that. So I-
Sorry, through the chair. So is that been, is that going to be, like, I get it, we get it all the time for funding, but how much on the fiscal, like, would there be takeaways that you would take from feedback from us to kind of look at it again?
It's-
Oh, it's an evil, okay.
Yeah, through the chair. Just, just as an entity stakeholder, if we get feedback, we do consider all feedback we get on a, on a project like, like Kingsway or Third Street Northeast, Northwest.
City manager, you wanted to add something?
Thank you. Through the chair, and I wasn't trying to jump the queue, but just in response to Counselor Hirsch, what I think you're saying is, you don't really want to, as a member of council, wait until project by project. You're trying to say, "We want to impact the high-level vision." And what I'm hearing from the group is that they want project by project. But I think you're saying, "We want an overall strategic input and direction in this plan and other plans." Is that, am I hearing you correctly?
Yeah, and I guess, I'll, I'll give you an analogy. So way back when they were doing the highway, the Trans-Canada Highway Review, and the adage was, "We're going to drive this like an interstate." And what that meant is, the no slowdown zones, no, 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 no lights. The idea was the efficient movement of people and cargo from one place to another. So you fast forward a little bit, and suddenly you drive through Dunmore, for example. There's a set of lights. You, you drive through. So what, what was contemplating was, okay, I get it, there's a lot of merchants. And I mean, we entertained a large company that came in and said, "We'll only come here if you put a set of lights right there, because we want them to stop and to be able to look over and see us." But that's got nothing to do with the efficient movement of tra, like, that's just marketing, quite frankly. So I know that there's, you know, impacts on everyone. I, I'm just looking at it from a perspective of, is it council's vision to have the efficient movement of traffic, or people, et cetera? Or is it this, or something in between? And I think that's where the magic begins, if you, if you will, sorry. But where really you can, you can sense and understand the current demands of, of the individuals to the future in terms of what, what's coming around the corner, and, and educate as we go.
Thank you. Through the chair, and just a follow-up. So you said in your experience, and I'm paraphrasing here, you said in your experience that you've always felt kind of hands-off when it came to the overall planning, development, these types of things. And what in your experience as a councillor, or where have you in the past felt like you've had the ability to impact? Or how do you see this playing out so that you guys as a council do have some input?
Well, and I, I guess I, I consider, when I read the vision statement, and how much do we have in terms of that involvement? And I go back to what our role is, the governor is to give you the vision and, and let staff execute on that vision. And when I see a vision, and I'm going, I can't recall us having that conversation, then I think that's the disconnect.
Counselor Robbins.
Yeah, I, I think I speak to different people than everyone else, because I'm speaking to parents about Division Avenue who are really grateful for the safety as their kids walk to school. And so I'm talking to different people. I have a, an RV. In fact, I drove across Canada with it between my truck and trailer. It was 40 feet long. So it wasn't easy to get through a lot of, the Maritimes put it that way. So I appreciate that that's an issue. But I did watch, I'm up on the hill sometimes three or four times a day, depending on the day, and I watched with interest the snow removal, because I grew up in Grand Prairie. And in Grand Prairie, they had no plan whatsoever for snow removal. So they just created a windrow right down the middle of the street, and it was like a luge track sometimes in the winter. So I, I did sort of watch to see how division would work in terms of snow removal, but still keeping a path and still keeping the driving lane. So most of the people I've spoken to, some have said, "Well, it's narrower." But most of the people I speak to, again, it's just, to your point, like, we're all councillors, and who are, the people I'm speaking to are saying, "This feels safer to us and our families than the way it was before." So, I mean, if there's an opportunity for all of us to share those ideas, to inform the ultimate plan, then that's, that's what we should be doing, of course. Anyway, that was, I wasn't going to talk about that. I'm just saying, I talked to different people, obviously. But I had a question in the TMP about transportation culture. So there's four actions there. I just wonder if you could give us an example of that. I just think it's an interesting phrase. The other ones, I sort of make very clear sense just by what they are. But what would be a transportation culture example of those four?
So my, my note here, without pulling up the TMP and reading them verbatim, is to create a safety, or a culture of safety, healthy living, and sustainable within the city as an organization, or as an organization and within the community. So we, we promote that safety and healthy living and sustainability in our transportation system.
So there's, of the four, can you give like one specific example? I get that-
I'm going to have to grab my, my TMP.
Yeah, sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm having trouble sort of envisioning what that might be.
So, thank you, Santi.
I just wonder if it's something like, you were talking earlier about parks and rec and the trail use. Would it be something like that that fits in that category?
Like, so looking at develop wayfinding and tourism, transportation management strategy. So how do we get our visitors around the city? And, you know, I actually, I read this one, "Grow a culture of safety, healthy living, and sustainability within the city of Medicine Hat." So I'm just trying to, "The organization proactively elevates road safety and healthy living as, and sustainable, sustainability is a priority for its employees, and embraces the uses and makes a commitment to integrate safety, healthy living, and sustainability in all aspects of transportation programs and projects. Employees have this in mind when planning, scoping, and designing construction, constructing a road. Employees regularly communicate the importance of road safety, healthy living, and sustainability with colleagues, customers, and contractors. Executive leaders are vocal supporters for safety and empower the employees to seek innovative approaches to improving safety, even if safety is not explicitly part of everyone's job title." So that's-
No, that totally helps. Because now I understand what you're talking about, creating a culture within the city as an organization to advocate-
That can translate out to the community.
Yes. And I like the wayfinding. I'm, I'm often driving to a rink somewhere in the, in the province, and some cities have such great, you know, this way to this rink, and some don't. And our city doesn't have that great of a way for people to find their way to facilities if they're from out of town. So I'm glad you mentioned that. That's of interest to me, for sure.
And just on wayfinding and signage, part of the work we're doing with Alberta Transportation is highway signage into the city. I don't know if you've ever come up to Gershaw Drive and saw the sign that says "Lethbridge City Center." So it gives you that illusion that you're going to Lethbridge's city center. So that's one of the, it's actually a, an example in their signage of whatnot to do.
Yeah.
So working with ATAC to help correct that stuff.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much.
Counselor Sharps.
Thank you, Councilwoman McGraw-Ben. So I think that Darren actually looked at my screen before he started talking. So I have a lot of the same, similar comments, except for I was actually going to make a little bit of a pitch here, so I'm going to do it right now. So I do think with this particular transportation master plan, I believe that we have a request, I have a request for some enhanced public engagement. So I will say, this original plan is 12 years old. There's been lots of updates to it. The council of the day approved it, but it's a totally different dynamic all over the community. I, I will say that there is, I think we all have different people feeding us, much to Counselor Robbins' point, but they're all valid. So I tend to hear a lot of the people that are pissed off between Division Downtown and the proposed changes on Kingsway, but much to her point, there's people that's not. So what I am going to suggest is that I would like to see, and I'm prepared to make a motion, to have a public participation day, a non-statutory public hearing. So it'll allow the residents to provide feedback. And I don't, and I think one of the things, when I was making my notes, and I hear about all the municipal mingles and all the public participation, and I think there's a miss, and that miss is, that is not in any way a slight to administration that those things weren't done. But what I'm hearing from people is they're not hearing, they're not talking to council, and they are wanting to get in front of us. So there is, and I have to say that I don't always know what they said to you, it doesn't get back to us. And one of the reasons I bring that up is when I was looking at, again, Counselor Hirsch brought this up last, two weeks ago, on the spectrum of public participation. And I didn't know it that well, but I went back and read it this weekend. And under the promise to public, under the involve, it's actually really interesting. "We will work with you to ensure that your concerns and aspirations are directly reflected in the alternatives developed, and provide feedback on how the public input influenced the decision." So I would like to see that. I would like them to feel that, and I would like them to be heard, including me. So I, that's my personal. So I would be open to making that motion. But anyways, let me finish my little rant here going on. So what, one of the reasons I think this is a good idea to consider is, on July 2nd, 2024, City Council gave first reading to bylaw 4803, which proposed revisions to the off-site levy bylaw. As part of this process, council approved a motion to include a non-statutory public hearing. And that was scheduled for August, but August meeting was canceled, so went to the September 3rd meeting. The decision aimed to provide additional transparency and gather broader community input. During the September 3rd meeting, significant concerns were raised by business leaders, stakeholders regarding the proposed changes to the off-site levy. These issues highlighted, including the complexity of the levy calculations, potential cost increases, and the impact on the competitiveness of the municipality. In response, City Council delayed the approval. However, the city started a task force with these developers and stakeholders, and they are finding a way to gather forward that is, everyone seems to be happy with. That's what we're hearing. So I think this is a result of the community being heard and being listened to, and administration given the opportunity to take what we heard and went back. So I would like to make a motion. Yes, I can. And council committee, I went and read the MGA, I can. But where's the clerk? Oh, the clerk, city clerk? Give me that look. I went and read, and it did say a motion was able to be made.
So you, you can make a motion that council committee, the whole recommends that council direct, but that's, that'll be it. So essentially, that council committee, the whole recommends that council direct administration to arrange a non-statutory public hearing related to the city's proposed transportation master plan.
Well, I've got something like that just written. And that's, I mean, I don't know if I've done any other motions that just do provide that direction. All mine said was that council direct administration to schedule a non-statutory public hearing within 60 days, timeline, regarding the transportation master plan, active transportation, and the transportation safety strategy, in recognition that there is significant public concern. And that the public, public hearing be conducted with council to gather public feedback prior- prior to any further implementation or amendment to the plan. And I just want to add to my motion before we ask for a second or uh, with Ms. Ishana Dickey's presentation, I found it interesting that eight A was encourage civic participation and engagement. So we are being bombarded by messages, phone calls, text messages. I, this is time, rubber hits the road in my mind, so uh, there's my motion.
Okay, looking for a second or?
I'll second that just.
Okay, can we, go ahead, city manager.
Thanks, through the chair, just uh, just a cautionary note too, that if this does go and approve whatever way, we will like to be able to give some background on it. And there likely will have to be a budget amendment because the budget and the public piece that was associated with this, I'm not saying it would be high, we just want the opportunity as administration to be able to give some background for that. So, thank you.
Okay, so do we have the motion up so we can read it or we just want to um?
Do you want me to re-say it? I, I mean.
Can you, may, can you?
Point of order, is it possible that we would all have the opportunity to comment first on this presentation and then have the opportunity to vote on the motion? I just feel like the conversation, the first step has not been concluded and I don't feel like my voice has been heard the first time, let alone on this new topic.
I'm fine with that, I, I mean, I, to me, it's not a new topic, it's ongoing. This has been in front of D and I, we've received probably forty-five emails over the last sixty days. And to me, it's not new, so, but I'm more than happy to hear anything. My motion was for to hear the public on this exact matter because they're the ones affected by it.
Okay, well, I think we could accomplish both things by continuing on with the comments and questions. And then at the end, if you're good with that, we'll put the motion on the table, have discussion and then a vote.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, sounds great, uh, Counselor Conoto.
Is there nobody in front of me, I'm number two. You're, you're done, okay. Okay, so um, I really, through the chair, I appreciate the focus on safety. This is something since the beginning of my term on council, I have heard. And again, I, I don't um, disagree with the fact that there's two, and I'm sure there's many perspectives about what's happening in the community and I'm absolutely willing to hear all of them. The majority of the comments that, and the feedback that I hear is more similar to Counselor Robbins. Again, doesn't mean that it's right or wrong, um, that's the population that I'm hearing from primarily. Working on the hill with teenagers, that is a, it's a huge deal to them to be able to use a safe walking path or a bike path or something that they can even, they've, many of them have described to me their ability to walk home to Southridge from school and, and, and not to say that that wasn't available to them before, but it's just different at this point. So um, I was curious about your comment in regards to uncomfortable bike lanes. And now uh, the picture, the light bulb has gone on, I'm, you're talking about the, is it college Ave? College in front of.
College Ave and Twelfth Street Northeast, Northwest.
Yeah, okay, so the, the ones that don't have uh, like a.
They're just painted, they're just.
They're just right on the road, understood, understood. And, and they're, in my perspective, from what I've observed, very poorly utilized, I would say, but probably, I don't see them used.
Nobody feels comfortable.
No, no, and that makes sense. Um, uh, Medicine, I've made this comment since the get-go, Medicine Hat in my perspective has uh, a, quite a lot of sprawl. It's a fairly, there, for the ability to navigate the space by on foot or it's not like we're downtown Calgary where you can get uh, you can get a lot in a small space. You have to go fairly far to find the, the next resource. For example, if you're going to um, if you're going to Big Marble and you're somebody that doesn't necessarily have um, a vehicle like a trans, you're either taking the bus and even if you're taking the bus, you're often walking as well. So I think having, um, thinking more inclusively beyond the car. And I, I drive a car, that is my primary source of transportation, but I do spend a lot of time walking. And I also interact with a lot of people who, who walk a lot and appreciate the, the safety measures because they're on foot. Or on, I'm seeing a lot more e-bikes as well that, and e-bikes can be used on these wider walking paths as opposed to in the past where you had to be on the road if you were on a bike. And that these multi-use trails in my perspective offer a really nice happy medium so that you can feel safe and you don't feel like you have to be on the road on a bicycle. And again, be feeling more unsafe. So, oh, also another thing regarding safety is uh, we saw, I think it was a total of four either fatal or close to fatal motorcycle accidents um, last year, last calendar year. And I think that ultimately if the physical space doesn't change and we're not building roads that condone like slower speeds or more tactful navigation of the roads, we're going to continue to see fast traffic. And again, I completely respect that there are different minds and different priorities when navigating the physical space. But I do think in my perspective, you talk about uh, zero incidents or what's your, what's the phrase?
So uh, vis- vision zero.
Vision zero.
So looking towards zero serious fatal, or fatalities and serious injuries.
Yeah, I think that that is a great priority. And I, again, it's interesting hearing from Counselor Hirsch about how do we get from point A to point B in the most efficient way possible? And that, again, I understand that. So I'm curious about two things and then I'll stop talking. Um, sidewalk materials, I have noticed there's a couple places in Medicine Hat that use recycled tire um, for sidewalk materials. If you could speak to that first and then I have one last question, Counselor McGrovan. I'm just curious about when that, why do we use that sometimes? Is it more economical, et cetera?
I, I don't know the exact details, I, I started my tenure at the city about a year and a half ago. But uh, recycle, it was a pilot project, maybe let State Director now, can you talk to that?
Through the chair, yeah, that was a pilot project done, oof, I'm guessing ten years ago or so. I believe it was some um, in, one in Riverside and one Harold School, I think, has uh, like a half a block or a block. And it was a pilot project and there's clearing, clearing issues, no clearing issues with rubber sidewalks. So we didn't uh, we didn't expand on that.
Can I continue to speak? Okay, thank you, through the chair, that's very helpful. And I did wonder kind of what the status of it was because there's parts of it, walking on it is quite enjoyable. But I do see the downsides now that you say that, so. Um, last thing is, do you have commu- does your department have commun- a community or multiple communities that um, inspire, inspire that, the work that you do? That you say, oh yeah, they're doing a really great job at what we see as, as valuable to Medicine Hat as a collective? And I understand right now where you're hearing from council that maybe there's more to the vision that we're missing. But um, for now, the way that it's structured currently, do you see a certain community or communities as kind of like, that's a cool thing, they're doing a great job?
We, we referenced a lot of different standards in communities. Uh, city Lethbridge does have a traffic, transportation safety strategy that we, we looked at like, kinda, we want to be like that. And you know, the city of St. Albert's another one that we looked at what they have available and strive to, you know, uh, go in that direction. Or to, trying to go on those communities that are similar sizes as opposed to the Calgarees and Edmonton's.
Super fast, uh, appreciate it. One last question, it just popped in my head, there is a uh, big speed hump on the hill, the, it's a traffic circle. And I've gone straight over top of it. I was wondering, um, and I will never again because it was a terrible experience. But is there a reason there is not a pylon indicating that that, is it intentional?
Are you reading my email? So we're currently working with Alberta Tra- uh, Traffic Supply on a flexible pylon as a marker in the middle.
Okay.
So it'll provide that directional arrow to the, to the road users while marking the, the road hazard.
I can't wait, thank you.
Bear with me.
Counselor Van Dyke.
Yes, thank you through the chair, I have a few comments to make. So early on in our term, um, I asked questions uh, at the time in committee about uh, active transportation. And this is when we were first talking about doing a strategy. And um, in my other work, we talk a lot about walkability and accessing services. And so this was very relevant because transportation can be a big impediment to people accessing the things that they need in their daily lives. And I kind of, I was told that uh, well, you know, Medicine Hat is a city of drivers. But I would challenge that by saying that we're a city of drivers because we're in a city that has been built for driving. Not that people don't want to have other ways of getting around the city. And um, for uh, about five years, part of the time that I was here in Medicine Hat and then in another community, I almost never drove a vehicle, I almost exclusively rode a bike with a bike trailer. And um, I would not do that here. Most of that time was in another community because I felt comfortable and safe to do it. I felt safe on the roads riding, I felt safe leaving my, my bike outside of businesses and uh, the hospital or church or wherever and I knew it would still be there when I came out. I can't necessarily say the same for that here, but my hope is that someday we would be able to offer that safety to residents in the community, to be able to choose to use um, cycling as their primary form of getting around or a combination of cycling and public transit because you can put your bike on the front of the bus and, and take the bus. So I really appreciate the work that has gone into these. Like Counselor Robbins, I think I'm maybe hearing from a different population than some of the other counselors. I have heard some complaints about Division Avenue, we've gotten emails about it, but I've heard a lot of people that are thankful for the safety that it brings for their children who live in that neighborhood or people who go to school there and have to walk um, around in the neighborhood or using the rec facilities as well. I think it's really important to be able to um, prioritize and uh, represent the ideology of safety in a community. So um, I think that's great work. I, I know there are technical things that are difficult for people to adapt to. I live in an older part of the city. I drove, I had a thirty-three foot trailer that I pulled behind a crew cab. And um, uh, four exits out of my neighborhood, all of which either had no lights onto a busy roadway or medians that made it very tricky. And you have to plan how you're going to get in and out of your neighborhood when you're working with those restrictions. So I understand how it can be difficult, especially if you're used to things being a certain way. But I, I think we do have to acknowledge that it's not just vehicle users in the city and that there are broad demographics of people that uh, need to be able to uh, get around and be safe in doing that. And um, so I think it comes down to we all value different things. That doesn't mean that one person's values are more important than another's. We have to find a way to represent all of those values in a community and uh, make sure that they're being um, supported and actioned on as well. So I do have one question and that is on how much influence the public can have in decision-making when it comes to areas like this that can be quite technical. So there are certain things in the community, like um, for example, public services, where a lot of those things are nice to have things where we make decisions, but there's not uh, necessarily uh, directives from higher levels of government saying you have to do this or regulations around it. Whereas when it comes to like uh, utilities, like deep utilities, how far down you have to dig or how big of a pipe it has to be or how wide the road has to be. When we have um, people from the community wanting to voice their concerns, how much influence does that have? And how much is prescribed by regulations that are coming from the federal government or the provincial government or um, the M G A?
So uh, in a, in a strategy like this, sorry, through the chair, there are vision statement and our focus areas are, it was all driven by those initial days of learning with stakeholders. So we, we took what we had and what we learned, develop an initial vision statement and presented that in our public survey and refined accordingly based on the feedback we got. When we get into a project-related level, we, we look to present conceptual designs to directly affected residents and businesses to help us understand what their challenges are and, and what they've observed in the past, whether it be speeding or tight turns or uh, trouble getting into a business. When it comes to the M G A, we, we don't have anything under the M G A for our, for our department. However, with these strategies, we do align with the M D P that does align with the M G A.
Thank you, so um, so to use the examples of Division versus Kingsway. So Division Avenue is going through mostly residential area, there is businesses and rec facilities, but it's a lot of uh, residential area. Whereas Kingsway is a commercial, essentially a commercial center, right? So in doing the um, maintenance work that would need to be done along that route, if, if you heard overwhelmingly from the business owners and users of that area that they don't want any like structural changes to the roadway, would you then just not even bother looking at making changes because it doesn't have a high? I mean, there are a lot of pedestrians down there, but.
It's very early to get sort of through the chair to get into the, the granularity of that project. But it, it would have to depend what the feedback is. So you know, improvements to Kingsway could be, I think at one reiteration, it was a lane reduction, incorporation of a trail, uh, improved crossing for pedestrian, pedestrians, access management to an arterial road. It could encompass many different things, but until we get into the actual scope of that project to understand it, right now for us as a department, we know that road is in poor shape and that road is going to need an upgrade. So while we upgrade that, we have to look for synergies with our other departments, whether it be electric or environmental utilities or gas, what they need, what the residents need, what the businesses need, what M W needs to make that road safer for everyone using it, whether it be vehicles or pedestrians and cyclists.
So there would be no way to say like thirty percent of the decision would be based on
It's.
compliance with, with standards and fifty would be.
Well, to comply with best management practices and design standards, one hundred percent, we have to comply with that.
Yeah.
Uh, as an engineer, I have a code of ethics to follow.
Yes.
And that is paramount.
But beyond that, it, it depends on the users.
It, it depends on what we're hearing, what the, what the requested change is or what the issue that business or residence is experiencing.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Robbins.
Thank you, and through the chair, I didn't mean to chime in again, but I forgot to ask, so thanks for accommodating this, about the multidisciplinary road safety committee. Because I think some of the questions that we're asking um, about public involvement in the choice and counselor in, involvement in the, how we um, manage the safety of roads in Medicine Hat, is that the purpose of that committee?
We'd be looking for like a, a council champion, someone to be on that committee with, with municipal works, uh, community inclusion, uh, Medicine Hat Police Service and among, among many others. It will, there's a lot of work to develop it, there are mandates have to be made on who's responsible for what and, but it is a very important role that, that we have to accomplish to direct our road safety initiative.
So the purpose of, so let's say the committee is, I'm just looking at who the members would be. We've got municipal work, engineering, operations, corporate communications, planning development. Mayor slash council is included as, as members, medicine, police service, transit, external stakeholders, which includes schools, other engineering partners like Alberta Transportation, so I'm reading you something you probably wrote, but just so everyone knows where, what, what my question is coming up here. First responders, special interest group, community services. If there was a um, a need for a change of a road like Kingsway, is that something that this committee once formed would review and be able to talk about? And would other people be able to be invited? Because it says these stakeholders at a minimum, but there might be other stakeholders that should be on the committee for that particular project. Is that how the committee is designed or is it more one level above like an umbrella?
It, it's an overarching committee, so I wouldn't modify, wouldn't look to modify that committee on a project by project basis. But it, it's, it's something that would need to be discussed further, whether it be through council or municipal works to develop the, who's going to be on that committee. Oh, I'll.
Thanks.
Through the chair to Counselor Robbins, so just to kind of, you know, talk about the design process that we follow. So I'd like to bring up an example of South Really that we did and we started in two thousand fifteen, did design work like in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and then the construction went in seventeen, eighteen. So it was a kind of four-year project. South Really, when I talk about is from bottom of the Shurden Hill, going all the way to. way to Kingsway Avenue. So that, about a 1.3 kilometer stretch of road. So the process that we followed, and, and yes, to answer the question, there is big influence from the stakeholders. They can, they can put out what is important to them, but at the same time, the design has to be also meeting certain objectives that we are trying to get to. So it's a compromise. There is a lot of back and forth, there's, it's an iterative process. So it took about two years for us to get to a design that was kind of acceptable to the stakeholders on, on South Railway, but at the same time, meeting our requirements. So our objective was access management, putting the multi-use trail, the active transportation side, but at the same time, the businesses had parking and other things that they wanted to be worked on. So we went back forth, back and forth a few times, till we came up with something that is conceptually acceptable to all the stakeholders, but at the same time, meets the city's objective. And then we went ahead, did the detailed design. So I think Kingsway Avenue would follow the same process, and then we'll get to that second level, where we work out the details. So yes, the process should follow that again.
Thank you for that. And I'm just wondering where the road safety committee fits into that planning?
Depends on what mandate we want to give to the road safety committee. That can be one of that, any, any major project goes through that committee and sort of, you know, and then there's a multidisciplinary, including a champion from the council, if it sits with that, it can bring back those decisions to you, to the council, and then sort of, you know, support that decision, or kind of bring feedback, whatever the case might be.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks.
Counselor Dumanowski.
Thank you. Through the chair, good conversation. I don't want to repeat or necessarily get into engaging debate about the, the personal feedback that we get from our constituents. Certainly, some have already indicated that, we, we hear from everybody, but we also hear from different people for different reasons at different times. When I look at the, the information in the report and, and, and we talk about engagement, I mean, it, it's spelled out on a significant level. I highlight a few. Online public surveys, multiple survey opportunities available for several weeks at a time to have the public engage and shape your city. We had online workshops with internal staff. So these are the people who are tasked to, from every department, to look at best practice, align it with, and align those best practices with the vision and guiding principles, strat plans, municipal government plan, et cetera. We had public open houses. We can never have enough of those. Again, more opportunities for the public to engage. The website visited near 2,000 times. I, I could repeat, but then there are the days of learning. I, I look at, when I think about the, the cross capture of our community, all the, the demographics, all the stakeholders, they, and there's not one I can think of that isn't already on the list, from the aged to the young, to school districts, to facilities, to bike medicine, et cetera. So, you know, I guess it's not, I'm not here to interfere in the sense of saying, well, to what level of engagement do we go before we, we were satisfied? I don't think anyone who has a very specific opinion about something, let's say Kingsway that's topical, would ever be satisfied if it didn't lend itself to their conclusion. And, and then the, the counterargument would be, there's still not adequate feedback because the, the direction doesn't align with what they thought it should be, and on and on it goes. For me, when I think about some of the things in here, and you alluded to, some of it is about the, the best practice, and I use best practice, but I'm talking about safety guidelines, et cetera. It's an evolving thing. In my time here, I know the, the bike folks, I'll call it, and they've been under different names over the years, have been strongly advocating for more, more and enhanced safety guidelines when it comes to movement of bicycle traffic in our community. We have lots of paths, but, but pathways aren't necessarily congruent with what a, a true person who's using a bicycle as a mode of transportation can, can work with. When I think about the emerging technologies, even, even in, in the years I've been here, not the, not to, not the least what's to come, and I say this seriously, not in jest, is the autonomous vehicle movement. We, we're seeing that happen exponentially. At some point, we won't have to worry about narrow roadway systems, because we won't even have to physically navigate it, the vehicle will do it for us. To, to, when I, I recently stayed downtown Calgary, as an example, went to a concert, we stayed downtown at a hotel, and I noticed, I was curious about their snow clearing, because we had snow here, they had snow and ice. It was their, it was their dedicated bicycle lanes, ironically, dedicated, partitioned by some of those pylons and things that you talk about, that were cleared and the roads were not, at, at that particular moment, on that particular day. So they, they've put, they activated clearing of bicycle lanes in downtown Calgary and not the roadways on that day. I, I was, actually, I think I took a photo of it, I was quite surprised, but then I, I observed, because I don't spend a lot of time down there, but when I, when I did, I noticed they've re-engineered so many of their roadway systems. This is downtown Calgary. We're worried about Medicine Hat, I love the city, but this downtown Calgary who have, who have actively changed and engineered their roadways to, to lend themselves to safe transportation in the form of bicycle and/or pedestrians. So I've been to New York four times over 20 years, and the last time I was there was just less than a year ago, and I've seen the evolution of, in, in Manhattan, of all places, of dedicated lanes. And I, I, we could all give many examples. My point is not about here to champion bicycle lanes, per se, but just to say that we're always trying to evolve and create a vision that is going to benefit our community and, and allow ourselves to develop in a way that's responsible, safe, and reflective of what, what people want, and, and certainly, we've come a long way. I really believe that. I'm not saying that because I was here. I, I think folks like you have really worked hard to make those things happen. So for me, and you, you raised the example, South Railway, I was here for that, was a great example, it took forever. Like, it really did, but it, but, well, look at the end product. Like, there were so many business personnel to, to engage with, and some of them were upset about losing what they felt were bicycle, or, sorry, parking spots that really weren't parking spots, but they were using them as parking spots. And some were worried about how vehicles enter their, their portion of parking and have to ingress and egress, and how that was changed, because they used to be able to do it from different directions. But in the end, you took the time, you engaged with them, and I liked your point. You stayed focused on what needed to be done, so what was the objective, but you waited patiently, you asked, you tasked them to give feedback, and you found a compromise. I guarantee you, not all of them were happy, but probably nobody left completely disappointed. So I think the likes of Division Avenue, again, had people say, what the heck did you guys do? And then after a while, they went, actually, you know what? This works. So I think sometimes people need time, but they need to trust. They need to trust the experts. We need to trust the experts. You're the experts. We can give feedback, but I, I worry about every four years, you're getting a whole new set of feedback. So you have to undo what you just did, or you have to redo what two terms ago, a, a group of people wanted. So it's, it's trying to grapple with real feedback, meaningful feedback from the public, which you've done hugely. We can always do more, and certainly council needs to be able to, and, and it needs to have, be afforded the opportunity to give some bigger vision around that. And, but in the end, it is down to the granular piece, which is your guys' bailiwick, and I, I don't want to interfere with that. I think they will, we will, there will be no end to interference if we, if we, if we're not happy with the direction in the end. So I don't know if I accomplished much in seeing what I did, other than say, I think what you've, what you're doing and what we're, where we're striving to go is, is, is light years ahead of where it was a couple of decades ago, I can tell you that. And I'm encouraged by where, where this is taking us, and the fact that we're being, we are being patient with our public, we are being patient with our business owners, and we're trying to reflect safety in the end, in our plans as we move forward. So I'm not necessarily opposed to more engagement, and I know there's a motion that will come forward. I'll maybe make some comments at that time, but I, but I feel like the engagement has been there. But the moment we go granular, we're always going to get, in, in the moment, we're always going to get the desire for more feedback in the form of some maybe disagreement, but in the end, we have to stay focused on our objectives and match it against where we need to go. And I, and I think you guys have the roadmap, no pun intended for that, so, well done.
Thank you.
Counselor Sharp, you have something, brother?
I'll just, I'll do a summary if everybody's done speaking.
Yeah, I just, I had a couple of questions, and then, okay, thank you. So I don't have a couple. I was on slide, I think it was 13, I, I was just, I noticed that existing gaps and issues. And what I, what I was wondering about is, you say 7% poor condition on sidewalks. How is that determined exactly? Is it evidence, specter walking around checking the sidewalks? Is it the number of calls and complaints? Like, how, how do we get to that determination? I'm just curious.
Common, through the chair, a combination of someone actually physically, I think two years ago, we actually had a, an individual walk our sidewalks in Medicine Hat and, and start the basis for that asset management, and it gets added to by public complaints or comments.
Yeah, thank you. I want that job.
It, it was quite rigorous in the middle of summer.
Okay, I don't want it. I don't want it. So secondly to that, I guess, so I understand this is a, you know, 10,000-foot view, but that, I think we're pretty specific on this particular slide. And what I'm curious about is if somebody phones in and says, you know, I live in the 200 block at 10th Street Southwest, and my sidewalk looks like something out of a third-world country. Do we have an ability to pivot and kind of go out there? Do we inspect it and we say, you know what? Yeah, this is worse than this, and this is where our budget money probably needs to go. Do we, do we pivot like that? Is there ability, I guess, at a, a granular level to, even though this is the big plan, to be able to shift if we see a need?
So, sorry, through the chair, through our sidewalk programs, we do maintain that ability to switch gears when need be, if something where like that were to arise. Do you, do you live on 10th?
Actually, no, I don't, but I, I ride an e-bike, and I was by there, and it, I just noticed it was pretty disastrous. And I'm just, but I wasn't, that wasn't my point. But it made me think of it, when I was riding that particular block the other day, and how poor it was. And again, it could, I could have phoned and found out, it's on the plan, it's, you know, number three or whatever, but I was just, it was more the example of that, I guess, that I was thinking than, you know, do we have the ability to shift if we find that we've got a really kind of unsafe kind of area? So thank you. Yeah, that's, that's really all I had on that one, and just checking my notes. Yeah, thank you. I think you answered that well. Appreciate that.
Counselor Sharp.
You already forgot.
I did.
Okay. So I'm just going to quickly summarize. At the end of the day, my argument and motion is not about this. My motion is about engaging the public. So under the MGA, our job is to have meaningful participation under Section 216.1. So when there is backlash from the community, our job as council is to seek that participation. So it's not about the active transportation at this point, it's about listening to the public. And so if we go back through our emails, it has been immense and abound. And I see this much like the off-site levy. The developers had a chance to speak, it's not something we normally do, but we found progress out of that. So I do believe that our staff are the, are the subject matter experts, but I do disagree with Counselor Dumanowski that we're just here to nod and smile. I don't think that is it. It is direction from us, but our direction comes from hearing from the public. So listening to everybody speak tonight actually tells me that there is a lot of differences, and even around this table, if we took a vote, it looks like it might be split. So maybe it's time to listen to the community and just hear them out. And if you're still split, you're still split, but maybe we'll be open to something collaborative coming out of it and moving forward in a positive direction. I know that one of the things I see on this list, or lack thereof, is all the user groups that were used, business owners weren't one of them. So there was a lot of interest groups, business owners weren't one of them. Now, I, we're just a small part, we're probably the higher paying taxpayer too. So maybe they should be on some of them, maybe they shouldn't. I don't know. But it's a pretty big plan to not have that user group on there. I would like them to have an opportunity. At the end of the day, its councils will, as we move forward, we can make this, I'll make this motion again, and the community will hear what we think of their public participation model or not. And that's the big thing here. So please don't take this as this is about me, not, I love this, I think there's a lot of good things in here. What's sticking in my craw is that I am actively hearing back from the community that they are not heard, so.
So I think we should conclude the presentation. So if anybody, if there's no more questions, thank you very much. I thought it was very informative, appreciate it. So then we'll move on to the motion, which is now before us. And the motion is that council committee of the whole recommend that council directs administration to schedule a non-statutory public hearing within 60 days regarding the transportation master plan, active transportation strategy, and the transportation safety strategy in recognition that there is significant public concern, and that the public hearing be conducted with council to gather public feedback prior to any further implementation or amendment of the plan. That's the motion that's on the floor, so now we will have speakers speak to it, and then we'll vote. So Counselor Dumanowski, you're first on the list.
Thank you. I, I mean, it, at, at first blush, it's hard to imagine how to oppose a motion like the one put in front of us. But I, I hurt, hurting back to what we observe in the report, I, when you, when I heard you say business owners weren't a stakeholder, they're part of the citizenry of Medicine Hat. They had significant participation. If they chose to negate or neglect their, their participation, that's, that, that's their choice. I, I don't know what end. If, if we put this entire report in front of the public, say, hey, come speak to any of it, and all of it, I don't know what kind of public statutory hearing we're going to have. Where do you start? Where do you end? It's so significant and multifaceted and, and yet, I go back to, and I'll end there, I promise, is when we, when we get to specific places like Kingsway, that's going to be the topic, for sure. This is not necessarily saying, here's what we're doing. We even heard the subject experts say, we would, we're not there yet. We got a number of, we got a, a big picture objective we need to meet, which is to create some connectivity, but we're not there yet. We will, just like South Railway, and I was here for all that, and it, and it was long, but it, but it was effective. There would be that kind of engagement with those business owners. So we have a hearing, they come here and they go, well, what are you guys doing? We're, we're not there yet. Oh, okay, well, let us know when you're there. I mean, well, we're going to engage with you when we get there. Like, I just don't know, I feel like we're creating a false front by putting this motion forward, so I will not support it.
Counselor Van Dyke.
Yes, thank you through the chair. So I'm with Counselor Dumanowski on this. Again, it, it is difficult to say, oh, I'm, I'm not in favor of public participation. But I feel that the level of public participation has been met, including business owners, I think, were represented through the Chamber of Commerce. They were an external stakeholder and, and had the ability to participate in the same way that other special interests or lobby groups were able to participate or were consulted in this. Because this is a very high-level document, and we're not at the, the project phase in it, I think that that level of consultation will happen at that phase. And again, a, a town hall or a non-statutory hearing, I don't know that that would serve any purpose, because at this point, at this level, all it's going to do is maybe give people the opportunity to talk about what they value, but we already recognize that there are differing values across the community, that we have to represent all of them. I feel that the due diligence in public consultation, internal and external stakeholders will, has been met, and that there, again, in this situation too, there's a lot of technical input that can't be altered by public participation, and that will all be, that information and consultation piece will happen as the projects come forward, as the budget and approval from council come forward in those phases. So I won't support this motion either. Thank you. So I won't support this motion either. Thank you.
Counselor Hirsch?
Thanks. Just a brief discussion, and I kind of alluded to it in my comments prior. And I guess, so I second this, just to actually put it on the floor, to actually have this kind of dialogue, which I think is very powerful. When I think and when I read the motion, it's very prescriptive. What I go back to is governance, we set the direction, and then how it's up to staff to show us how to get there. So when I ruminate on this, I look at it from a governor's perspective, saying, "The thing that is missing is engagement," or somehow, some way, in specific developments get challenged, and then people go, "What happened?" So what I'm alluding to is, there is a sense of lack of engagement. So that's the vision, or that's, but the one thing here that we're talking about is already being prescriptive, which I would call, and with the greatest respect to anyone that makes the motion, but it's legislation on the fly. And I don't necessarily want to be that prescriptive. I would suggest, and again, we can vote on this or whatever, but I think what we can do is certainly signal to administration that we would like to have some sort of mechanical, some sort of options, some things, options to be considered for our review, to help guide the direction of exactly what we're talking about, is trying to alleviate and to capture that people have proper feedback, understanding, et cetera, of any projects that come. So in the totality, if I read it right now, I'm not sure if I'm there to have the whole transportation master plan being looked at. I think the people, some people are absolutely worried about some specific projects, not necessarily the transportation master plan on the totality of it. So we'll see how this goes. Like I said, I seconded to actually have this sort of conversation. We could either table it, or we could absolutely either vote it for or vote it down. But again, I would argue that what we could do in terms of options included would be to direct staff to come back with options in terms of public engagement, something to that matter. But anyway, and I think we'd probably get more, relatively more success, given the fact that I'm hearing around the room that they're not going to support it. So just my thoughts. Thanks.
Counselor Sharp?
Sure. I just wanted to touch on some of the comments that being made. I don't know that I appreciate that. I think that there's a, I get a sense that we don't think our public can ascertain this information. I think they ascertain it quite well. At the end of the day, if there was, if it was project-based, this council's been in since 2021, and Kingsway was done after our time, so that was never in front of us and approved. So if it was based on a project-based, we had an opportunity, well, that's already not come to fruition. So I disagree that that's the theory. I will say that using the chamber as the only source of business, when less, I'm going to use downtown as example, less than 30% are chamber members. So again, open the doors and invite them. I will say that I've attended every single municipal mingle. I go to all of them. Go to them if they're twice, I go to them in the morning, I'll go to them the next day at the college. And I talk to people, much to what the director was saying, was to not, we're not just there as counselors, but we're there as citizens. So, and then I stop and I talk to them, and I listen to them. And there were some people that absolutely walked out really angry for not being heard. One was a business owner, one was just an older person that felt like they weren't being heard. So that is what I take back and bring back to this table. So when I look at the comments around the table about we're getting too granular, reality is, what's, we do approve the MDP, all the other plans underneath it. This is well under. This is probably the least granular plan out of all those plans. And so when you look at the MGA, it absolutely says to take it back to the public if there is this level of angst around it. So at the end of the day, I will be fine with whatever council does, because it is the will of council, and I will abide by that. But I do think that we should think back to all the emails that you received, and if really this is all open to the people coming in here and hearing what they have to say, you have nothing to lose. None of us do. We could hear everything, and you'll still have the same decision that, "No, I approve this transportation plan. I like everything about it, and you can move forward." But at least you can say that we heard them, just like we heard everybody else, because that literally is our position. So I will just leave it with that.
City Manager Mitchell?
Thank you, through the chair. And just a couple of comments I wanted to make that in response to Counselor Hirsch. And we do always look at improving how we're doing public participation, but where we get all the feedback is through your strategic plan. And certainly in October, we did a strategic plan, and we listened, and this is an exact result of what we heard from your strategic plan. Does that mean there's never room for improvement? Absolutely not. And we do strive to get better and better in each project. And I think, you know, we've got different things at our disposal now. We're doing videos, we're doing this. So we're always constantly trying to improve the public participation. But this plan is actually something that came out of your strategic vision. So that is where we heard these things, and I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
City Manager Mitchell, I'm just wondering if you could specify, are you talking about the October, the kind of the recharge we did?
The overall strategic plan and the vision. And I'm not just talking about that, Counselor McGrogan. I'm also talking about, we listen all the time, as myself as a conduit between you and staff, and we're listening to what you're saying, we're listening to what you're not saying, we're listening to the feedback from the public. We hear it, too. And we're making sure that we, as public servants, are trying to deliver services in a thoughtful manner. So we're always trying to do continuous improvement, and this is including public participation. And we're trying to make decisions. And I respect what Counselor Sharp is saying, but sometimes we can't always listen to the loudest voices. Sometimes we have to do good for the entire community, and that's really hard.
Did you want to respond to that?
I did. I don't know how we've determined that it's the loudest voice without a public hearing.
So I guess I have a question for you, Counselor Sharp, if you don't mind. I'm curious about this plan overall, how you would see it changing, because we did have a public hearing now. I mean, we've heard that there's been opportunities for public engagement along the way. So now it's kind of put together, here it is, 30,000-foot level. What, can you give me an example of how you think it may change because of a public hearing?
Sure. So number one, our public engagement policy was drafted in 2018. And as a council, we're supposed to make sure that's looked at every four years. So we're slightly out of date. And the reason, I think, the whole point of reviewing it every four years is because it changes. People change, dynamics change, downtown changes, businesses change, councils change, expectations of our community changes. And I think the expectations from a decade ago to the expectations of now are very different. A lot of the same business owners that were around 10 years ago are no longer around. A lot of the same people. It's just a very different place. I've been in my house now for 20-some years, and I don't have any of the same neighbors, none. So it's just a very different place. And it doesn't mean just because it worked 10 years ago that it should work always. It is okay to listen to our community. That's all. Does that make sense?
It does, but I guess I was being more specific.
Oh, sorry.
I'm just thinking about this transportation strategy and transportation safety strategy. What is an example that you could see that, you know, reading the document, that would change as a result of the public hearing?
Sure. Okay. I apologize. I missed your question. That was too many words. So one of the things, and we can use the one that's always hot and heavy these days, is the downtown. So that is a huge issue. So if you look at the transportation safety numbers provided by administration, and then look at the ones that are being provided by Alberta Transportation, they're slightly different. So why? Was there an interpretation difference? Was there an understanding difference? Why? So if the numbers are clear as mud, then we should be able to support them in a public hearing and defend that to the public.
You have a comment?
Can I add to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, through the chair. I've reached out to Alberta Transportation on the location in question that you're bringing up. One of the things we do through our strategy is very hone in on the intersection itself. The data can be cumbersome, and if you don't look at it with a fine lens, you're going to encompass mid-blocks and parking lots. Alberta Transportation indicated they just did a GeoBox around the intersection, so there's going to be variance in the numbers.
So this is my point exactly. Great opportunity for public participation. So, I mean, I've read the email from the Alberta Transportation research guy, and he broke it down to the way, which way the traffic was going. And the email clearly states, on one of them, for example, there was one incident in seven years, and it was because a guy slipped his foot off the brake. So very different than what we're presenting. So opportunity to fix it and move forward in a positive way. But I'm putting it out there. I know where I feel. I am more than happy to listen to citizens. I do it every day, all day. I meet them all day. And I really, really believe public engagement is so important. So not just what you guys do at the municipal mingle, but it is also here. And when, again, when I look at the public participation model, one of those things is, take all that data you hear and combine it and tell people what you've done differently. And that's one thing I don't see us doing really well. I don't see, because I don't know, I can go over this document over and over, and I can't see 10 people that had said, "This is what doesn't work for us," and what we said, "Oh, yeah, you're right. Okay, this is what we can do different." But yet, that is part of the public participation model. So I feel like when that keeps, or they feel that, that's why there's still an uproar. So what harm is there in letting them be heard? No different than the employment situation. If employees are heard, they're happier.
Okay, thank you. I guess I haven't really weighed in yet. I don't, I have no objection to sitting and listening to people that want to come in and give their feedback on this plan. But what I wonder as well is, what is it, how is it going to shift and change the plan? And I know, City Manager, you mentioned there may have to be a budget amendment. I don't know what that means exactly, but if, I'm just going to, if we had a, yep, you're coming. If we had a contingent that came here and spoke loudly against, I guess, specific issues, how would that change this larger plan to any degree that would shift how we're doing business?
Thank you, through the chair. I just want to reiterate what I said earlier, is that we are very close to an election, as we all know. We are, as staff, administration, have a completely, and I'm not saying we don't want to do it, if it's the will of council, we will, but we have a very full plate. And if this passes, we are going to have to figure out how we're going to do the, because the project's been done, the public participation has been completed, and it's coming back to council. So we will have to find time to have another meeting. We have just scheduled four extra meetings because we're trying to make sure we get everything done that council has directed us to do under the mandate. So that's all I'm saying as a cautionary note. We are attempting to implement your vision, we really are, but there's only so many hours in the day, and there's, everything that we do extra has a cost to it. So that's why I was trying to reiterate that. Thank you.
So seeing no other speakers, comments, questions, we'll put this to vote. Oh, yeah. No, I'm supposed to say, it looks like it was defeated, one yes and the rest are no's. Thank you. So, oh, Counselor Hirsch?
So, and I kind of mentioned my comments prior to voting, but, and I guess what I'm wondering, and if this is somewhat of a takeaway, or we need to formalize it in another motion in a future meeting, but I really do feel still that level of passion. I would like to get administration's feedback and options considered. How do we, on a kind of go-forward basis, drive a bit more in terms of what we're talking about here and the essence of engagement? And I get it. So why, I had mentioned that this is very prescriptive, but I like the spirit of where it's coming from. And I think if we need to go there in terms of emotion, that's fine. But I think on a go-forward basis, you're hearing, even with my comment in terms of Division Avenue, the comment was, "Well, if you're hearing it, man, you should hear it in our department." And I guess that's what I'm getting at, is that the work was done, people went, "What?" And then the feedback and public participation was post the event. How do we get that into the former and not the latter, is what I'm trying to drive. Thanks.
Yeah, just before you speak, I agree with that. And I think Counselor Sharp's hit on something, is that we need the engagement to be more effective. I don't know if it's at this stage, but I think if we have issues like the downtown issue we've all been dealing with and hearing about around the parking, you know, on Sixth Avenue, is there, what's the mechanism to hear that sooner, to look at alternatives and adjustments? And to me, it's just not in this plan, but it's in the projects, and it's in the budget planning and what have you not. And I think of, you know, the table that was created in our last presentation, that I think we're going to be more prepared in the future, the next council, to look at individual budget asks and projects, and then have that, ensure the feedback is there, and ahead of time. Not, yeah, we did a couple mingles, and we think we've heard, and I'm not trying to be facetious. I know that we try really hard to hear the public, and it is hard, until all of a sudden, it's, "Wait a minute, that's going to affect me." But anyway, having said that, like 200 block of 10th, which I don't live on. So anyway, I do, I appreciate the motion, and City Manager, if you wanted to just finish us off here, I think after that, we'll probably be concluded.
Thank you. And through the chair, I think it goes back to managing expectations and making sure that the public understands when they're giving feedback, what does that mean? So there's a whole spectrum of that, and I'm not going to get into all the particulars, but what are we, are you going to help us with our decision, or are we just hearing you? And then we all have to be on the same page. And you, as council, are boots on the ground. So once a decision is made on how we're going to participate and the expectations, this piece of participation is just for us to hear you, or all the way to the other end of the spectrum. And we're trying to change our council reports, our briefing notes, our requests for decisions, so they clearly say, "This is what this is for. It's a housekeeping matter," or all the way to the other end, "What are your thoughts?" So I think the managing expectation piece is important, but we will take that back and have a more fulsome discussion with staff. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. And with that, it looks like all of our items are concluded. Thank you very much to staff for your presentation and feedback, and meeting is adjourned. Thank you.